I would like to open the Santa Barbara Unified School District's Board of Education meeting for September 13, 2016. Dr. Dradi, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Please stand. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Buenas tardes. En el público que desee escuchar la interpretación en español tenemos los aparatos disponibles a través de esas puertas dobles. Muchas gracias.
We also have headsets for the hearing impaired, and if you require one, would like one, please indicate if you need one. Moving on, we will move on to the superintendent's report.
We do not have a superintendent's report today. The only announcement I want to be able to make is that I'm sitting in place of Superintendent Kerry Matsuioka. He had a family emergency he needed to attend to, so he's in our thoughts.
Correct. Board, any board comments or correspondence? The only thing I wanted to note is that we have, is it Saturday or Sunday? We have the day of caring?
Saturday.
Saturday. So for any of you out there who want to participate in and contribute to the community in many different ways, there'll be places for everyone to participate.
And actually, I think at the last board meeting, we asked if perhaps something could go out in e-muse about what was happening on our local campuses, so that we know what sites at our district are going to be some sites where some of this work's going to get done.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Herron.
Two things. One, I noticed in news today that Liam Clevenger passed away. He was our principal at San Marcos High School for three or four years, I believe. So just a note that he was very important to our district, and it's sad to see. And two, I didn't get to go last night, but Adelante had a special board meeting, and they've made a final offer for a new principal. And by all description, he's a wonderful choice, and hopefully he'll accept the offer in the next couple of days. He's got reasons to be here, and he's got a great background in bilingual education, so hopefully it works out. So they're very happy, very pleased. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other board comments? If not, we'll move on to item number seven, announcement in closed session action. We have two items in closed session, and we don't have anything to report at this point in time. We move to number eight, public comments on non-agenda matters within the jurisdiction of the Board of Education. No public comments. That moves us to acceptance of donations for September 13, 2016.
I move to accept with gratitude.
I'll second it.
Under discussion?
Yes.
Just one note. I noticed on the very last item that the Incredible Children's Art Network, ICANN, donated art, equipment, and supplies for the elementary visual arts program. Under the amount, it says "NA." I just want to point out, it's a substantial value of the equipment that they have donated to the schools, and we should thank them very heartily for that donation.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 That moves us to the consent agenda. Board, do we have anything we'd like to pull? I have one item that I would like to abstain from voting on, which is approval of human resource recommendations. My wife is on the agenda, or on the human resources list, and so I'll abstain from voting on that item. But does someone like to make the motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda minus that item?
Some will.
I'll second.
Motion made by Mr. Herron and seconded by Ms. Limon. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 On my approval of the human resource recommendations.
I will second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Abstentions, one. That moves us to item number F, public hearing. Public hearing on resolution 2016-17-13 regarding the sufficiency of instructional materials for year-round elementary schools. Dr. Dradi.
Dr. Raul Ramirez will present this information.
Hi, good evening, Board. Board President, Dr. Paz. This is something that happens on a year-by-year basis, and this will be the first round of what we call will use efficiency, its efficiency of instructional materials. And it's pertinent to our year-round schools, Cleveland and Santa Barbara Community Academy.
Board, any questions, comments?
No.
Someone like to make a motion? Oh, no, excuse me. There is no motion. It's a public hearing. No other questions? We will close this part of the public hearing, come back to the regular agenda. And now we move to the approval of resolution 2016-17-13 regarding sufficiency of instructional materials for year-round elementary schools. Dr. Dradi.
Unless there are any other questions on that, we'll just ask for approval.
Can we have a motion for approval?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution 2016-17-13 regarding sufficiency of instructional materials for year-round elementary schools.
I will second that.
Motion made by Ms. Idelson, seconded by Ms. Limon. All those in favor, please say aye.
My usual comment, I've made it for many years. It seems strange to be using textbooks 12 to 15 years old, but I guess they're still meaningful and still useful, but it just seems strange to me.
Yes, I would agree. So a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 That moves us to item number two on the action agenda, approval of bond measures Q 2010 and measure R 2010 Oversight Committee members. Dr. Dradi.
I'll invite David Hetney to come present this information and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Dr. Dradi, Board members, as terms expire for members of our bond oversight committees are two-year terms, and I'd like to have you accept some re- let's say, reappointments of people to these terms. Specifically for measure Q, Marji Yavi and Lang Sly have ended their terms, and we're asking you to reappoint both of those members. Additionally, Eric Peterson has ended his term, but he's unable to renew. So we'd like you to follow the recommendations for measure Q of reappointing two board members. Also then for measure R, Frank Stevens and again Lang Sly and Monica Cotterelli completed their terms, and then we're recommending second terms for those people.
Next one.
Thank you. So first, I want to thank all those who have volunteered their time to serve on both the measure Q and R committees, and those that are reappointing, part of the reappointment process. To continue serving time, we are grateful to them for investing their time to be on these committees. Question, what, so how many spots do we have left now to fill?
I'm not sure. Barbara Kiana usually takes care of this, and I'm filling in for her tonight. I don't know if we have any open positions or whether they're all filled.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Perhaps we can get someone on staff to let the board know the number of current vacancies on both committees, and then either have Superintendent Matsuioka send us on our Friday letter the number of positions.
And the committees meet quarterly, and I believe our next meeting is scheduled for next week.
Perfect.
I will go ahead and make the motion to approve the bond, the members of the bond measures Q 2010 and R 2010 Oversight Committee.
I'll second it.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 With lots of gratitude towards their participation, continued participation. Thank you.
I'll relay that to them at the meeting.
Thank you. That moves us to item number three, approval of resolution 2016-17-14 proclaiming Santa Barbara Unified School District's recognition of National Hispanic Latino Heritage Month. Dr. Dradi.
On behalf of Superintendent Matsuioka, I am happy to bring forward a request to approve a resolution, a resolution 2016-17-14 proclaiming Santa Barbara Unified School District's recognition of National Hispanic Latino Heritage Month. He asked me to read the resolution out loud, if you don't mind. I'm just going to go ahead and do that for the public to hear. Resolution proclaiming Santa Barbara Unified School District's recognition of National Hispanic Latino Heritage Month. Whereas, National Hispanics-Latino Heritage Month had its origins in 1968 when Congress passed Public Law 90-498, which authorized and requested that the president to issue an annual proclamation designating the week, including September 15 and 16, as National Hispanic Latino Heritage Weeks. This law celebrated Hispanic Latino Americans and the anniversaries of independence for the Latin American countries of Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua, as well as Mexico's independence on September 16. Whereas, in 1988, Hispanic Latino Heritage Week was changed to a month-long recognition, and the name was changed to National Hispanic Latino Heritage Month. The decision was enacted into law on August 17, 1988, as Public Law 100-402 and amended in Public Law 90-498. National Hispanic Latino Heritage Month begins on September 15 and ends on October 15. Whereas, throughout history and into current day, Hispanic Latinos have made significant contributions in areas such as education, government, science, medicine, entertainment, literature, sports, military, thereby adding to the vibrancy of the United States. Whereas, the Hispanic Latino population of the United States comprises the nation's largest ethnic or race minority, and census records indicate that Hispanic Latinos constituted 17% of the national total population and 38% of California's population. In the Santa Barbara Unified School District, 59% of the district's students are Hispanic or Latino. Now therefore, be it resolved, that the Santa Barbara Unified School District Board of Education believes that National Hispanic Latino Heritage Month provides a valuable opportunity for all students and staff to learn and recognize the contributions, histories, and cultures of American citizens whose ancestors came from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, and Central and South America. Passed and adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Education of Santa Barbara Unified School District this 13th day of September 2016 by the following vote.
Thank you, Dr. Dradi. Can we get a motion to approve?
On my approval of the resolution 2016-17-14.
Mike.
On my approval of resolution 2016-17-14 proclaiming Santa Barbara Unified School District's recognition of National Hispanic Latino Heritage Month.
I will second that.
Motion made by Mr. Herron, seconded by Ms. Limon. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you. It moves us to item number four, approval of resolution 2016/17-12 for adopting the GAN limit. Dr. Dradi.
Ms. Megzutay will due the honors.
Thank you, Dr. Dradi. Board members, so every year, we have to pass a resolution for the GAN limit. This GAN limit was bazillion years old. It really doesn't play into anything anymore, but it's still a required resolution that we have to have you approve. The GAN limit is in and is part of the unaudited actuels, and it just says that, hey, you're going to spend more money than you did last year. So if, all I'm asking is the board will approve resolution 2016-17-12.
Board, any questions, comments? I'm just going to make a motion. Like to make a motion, Ms. Idelson?
Yes, I will make a motion to approve the resolution 2016/17-12 for adopting the GAN limit.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Idelson, seconded by Mr. Herron. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you. It moves us to item number five, approval of the agreement with accountable school staffing. Dr. Dradi.
Mrs. Helen Rodriguez will due the honors.
Good evening, Board President, Dr. Paz, Board members, and Dr. Dradi and Cabinet. I stand before you to inform you that we are diligently searching to fill our vacancies for school psychologists, and with the non-public agency that we have listed here accountable school staffing, there is a school psychologist available. We ask that you will allow us to contract with this agency.
Board, any questions, comments?
I guess, this is becoming common. Is it a question that our pay scale is not sufficient enough to attract people, or what's the reason we can't attract them?
I'm not aware of why we cannot attract them. We do have the vacancies. That's something that we can work with human resources to find out why. We just, right now, the urgency is to fill the vacancies. We have posted, HR has posted these vacancies, and we have not been successful in searching or finding candidates, so therefore we have to expand our search to non-public agencies.
I agree with that, but I'm just curious, if we keep doing the same thing over and over and get the same results, that's definition of sanity. Is there a better way, or do we need to offer more to get qualified people to join our staff?
I think we would have to do some kind of research to be able to answer that question.
I'm going to have Mr. Torina perhaps chime in a little bit.
Yes, it's hard to know because they're just not showing up. So it would be different if we had a lot of candidates, and then we offered, and then they declined. We might be able to ask them why you don't want to come to work here in Santa Barbara for our district. But when we open up positions and don't get people to apply, it's difficult to get that kind of feedback.
Have you had an opportunity maybe perhaps to ask other neighboring districts who are a little farther away that are experiencing a similar thing? Are you aware?
They are experiencing the same type of shortage we are. I contacted Lompoc. I know some people that I talked with regards to Kerry's old district that he mentioned. He knows it's statewide, if not nationwide.
Yeah. Ms. Idelson.
How does the total cost of $103,000 compare to what's being offered by us generally for the position?
For the pay scale, it would depend on the years of experience and where they would fall on the pay scale. This total cost would probably be equivalent to a school psychologist, which would include their health benefits.
But in this case, it's just the salary that's it. So it sounds like indeed that private agency is paying better than the school district, right? Because we're not providing benefits for this person.
I'll let you.
Ms. T.
I can answer that. When you go to a staffing firm, they charge you for everything, both sides of FICA, both sides of Medicare. This is, this is the whole thing. It's not just salaries. This is the total cost of what it's costing them.
So this number is what the district would pay to the company?
That's correct. But it's basically, it's pretty equivalent. I think I did the math a while back on this, and it's pretty equivalent. It's probably just a little more because we pay FICA, which is the social security, and we would only pay one side, they would pay the other. But in this case, we pay both sides, I'm sure.
Ms. Limon.
And what happens now? Does that position stay open? I mean, because this is kind of my question for the next two items, but do these positions just stay open until filled, or now that we've made a contract with something, they close and then they reopen again? What are the efforts in place to try to bring someone to our team in the long run?
We're going to continue to post the position, and when we do hire someone, in the contract, it gives us a 30-day notice to notify the NPA, and at that point, there's a transition time, and we bring in the person, and there's an overlap.
Any other questions? Just wanted to comment, I think that what we're seeing is just a reflection that, one, there's a shortage, and two, it may be a little challenging to entice people to come here with the cost of living thrown in there as well. And so, I don't know if there's a quick solution or an easy solution in that regard, but I think it's a long-term thing that we have to tackle and try to find some other ways, if there are other ways.
Yes, I do believe what the SALPA has reported, that as Mr. Torina said, there's deficiency, but I think we're in a good, we're in a good position because there are openings over there, but we're getting the people wanting to work for Santa Barbara Unified.
Yeah. Do we have a motion?
I will move to approve the agreement with accountable school staffing.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Ms. Limon, seconded by Ms. Idelson. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 That moves us to item number six, approval of the agreement with Arder Health Solutions.
This non-public agency not only has a school psychologist that's available, but also a speech therapist, and we're hoping that you allow us to contract with them as we continue to search for both.
Ms. Limon.
Two questions. So one, for this position and the last position, since these people are already living here, is there a pathway, perhaps a complicated pathway, but nonetheless, a pathway for them to become permanent members of our team in the future?
Yes, if we find a candidate that is doing very well and fits in with our district, and they are interested to become a permanent employee, we can work something out with the agency where we buy their contract out.
Okay. And I forgot my second question, sorry.
Mr. Herron, and perhaps after Mr. Herron speaks.
I do think a study should be done, salary schedule to study, to see if our, you know, if we don't get any responses, maybe there's not enough on the table. I like to have a study of some nature showing the districts that have these positions what they're paying. So, I mean, that should be pretty easy to find out, and if we're way under, we need to know that.
Mr. Torina.
Ms. Limon.
I remembered my question, you can answer it.
We can do that.
Ms. Limon.
So now that we're hiring a speech and language pathologist and two psychologists, right?
Yes.
What is our remaining need? How, I mean, does this cover all of our need, or do we still have positions for speech and language pathologists and/or psychologists that still need to be filled in our district?
My understanding, tomorrow we have some interviews, and not with NPAs, but we are trying to fill that. And yes, we do have at least two more school psychologists if we fill them with these positions. We still have two more openings, and with our speech therapists, we do have a couple of openings. But we do have interviews for tomorrow for at least school psychologists, and I believe we have been actively recruiting just through our ITARANT support providers, and I believe there are some that are saying that they will apply, and once they apply, we will interview them.
Okay, thank you. And I would support the recommendation to try to do a study or think about it, because I can also imagine that with the change, there could be disruption in the delivery of service, especially because I tend to believe that K-12 is unique in some ways, and you can't always just jump in and understand the culture, the systems of schools. So, you know, in the best interest of students, I would definitely support a way to really thinking about how we, it's a hard issue. Clearly, we're not alone. We're not the only district, but how we try to tackle some of this for our students.
Do we have a motion?
I will go ahead and make the motion to approve the agreement with Arder Health Solutions for a speech and language pathologist as well as a psychologist.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Ms. Limon, seconded by Ms. Idelson. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. That moves us to item number seven, approval of variable term waiver, C-Best Ed Specialist, mild to moderate. Dr. Dradi.
Mr. Mitch Torina will due the honors in presenting this.
Board President, Dr. Paz, Board members and Cabinet, this is a waiver that the CTC permits districts to use when we have positions that are being filled by staff educators that do not have a current California credential to do the work that we're asking them to do. The waiver is something that's very short-term. We probably will see a few more of these as we come across. This one is specific to an experienced elementary teacher from Idaho who sought to apply an interview for a mild-to-mild special education position. She is currently enrolling in a program at Cal State University of Channel Islands in which we have an MOU to work with her as an intern, and she plans to take the C-Best this month, actually probably this week, I think is being offered. So the recommendation that the Board approve the variable term waiver for the C-Best Education Specialist, mild to moderate.
What will passing the C-Best, if she passes it in the next day or so, what does that change? What does that?
It allows her to actually come in to teach with our students. Our substitutes are also required to do that. So it's basically, since she's from out of state, it's giving us a baseline by which she has the certain academic knowledge to be able to produce.
And where will she be working?
I'm not sure exactly what site, Helen, do you remember? For sure, oh, no, she'd be going to Dos Pueblos.
And she's an elementary teacher?
Yes.
And what experience does she have with this clientele?
The work that she did in Idaho was under special education. She's not cleared to do that work with us here in California yet. So as she enrolls in the program through Cal State University of Channel Islands, she will be used as an intern with us.
And, but no experience in mild to moderate in high school?
I'm not sure that I can check on that.
Ms. Limon.
So it sounds like this is also coming to us based on need.
Correct.
And we all know that we've had a shortage of special education teachers in the state for quite some time. What are we, besides her training or her coursework at CSU Channel Islands, what are we doing to train, to provide in-house support to someone that is there because we absolutely need it, but also is coming from a different state, hasn't had, it sounds like hasn't had all of the experience with this particular target population? So is there anything else that we are doing as a district to ensure that she is more, is able to be, is more successful in that position?
And supportive, yeah.
This seems hard. This seems.
Part of what we're doing is some of the new structure that Helen has done, Ms. Rodriguez has done with SPED in regards to the program facilitators, be more hands-on at each school site, creating a stronger support network for that person going into a certain school. We know that some of our schools currently have really strong special ed departments to do the work that can really support a new teacher, and some of them are not as strong. So our job is to really assess who the strong ones are, and to make sure that they're supporting our new teachers coming in, or some of our intern teachers who are taking these positions.
Okay, so I'm guessing that that's happened at Dos Pueblos, and we have principals on board at wherever this is happening, because it seems that the principals should also be on board in providing that level of support in order for this to be successful.
Yes, Sean Kerry was made aware of the possible assignment, and actually has talked with the teacher, and she said the teacher is very enthusiastic and ready to go to work at the DP, at the high school level.
All right. Any other questions? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the variable term waiver, C-Best slash Ed Specialist for mild to moderate.
I'll second.
I will second that.
And I'll just add, I hope that there's, like Ms. Limon was saying, that there's somebody that would take an interest in making sure this person is successful. There's nothing in this document that leads me to believe that she's the right person for the position. I have heard nothing that would tell me that, other than the principals talked to her, she's a nice enthusiastic person, but this is not a simple group of children to help. And so I hope we have hands-on help for her.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you. That moves us to item number eight, approval of mobile devices purchase. Dr. Drouin.
Mr. Todd Rickman will do the honors of presenting this item.
Dr. Drouin, Dr. Paz, I am here to request the approval of purchase of mobile devices. These devices will support our instructional materials pilot and also back, 40 of them will backfill iPads at third grades at our one-to-one schools and provide extra devices for smarter balance testing.
Forty questions, Ms. Limon.
So, 40 of them are for one-to-one programs, so 40 of them are going to be taken home and the other?
They're going to be in third grade classes, used as one-to-one devices, but not taken home.
But not taken home.
Correct.
So, all of these, the 100 iPads and 16 Chromebooks are essentially staying on our campus. They're not part of any historical model we've discussed.
Forty of them are part of a historical model.
Uh-huh.
The rest are for the.
Site classroom?
No, the, the instructional materials pilot and also to help with S-Back testing.
So, they'll be rotating?
Yes.
576 Chromebooks.
And what site will the ones that go home be on?
They're not, none of these devices are going home unless they're part of an instructional materials pilot. And we haven't decided on those yet because schools have not finished their applications to do that.
Mr. Herron.
It's 1,000 iPads and 576 Chromebooks. Of which 40 backfill the one-to-one. My concern is that the last meeting, we approved the concept of these four to six pilots at a cost of $50,000 each and a total max of $300,000. And I asked the question, where's that money coming from? And now, it sounds like this, they're spending $500,000 to supplement that program. And so, to get these six, four to six pilot programs plus smarter balance testing, which is another whole thing.
Right, these devices will be used no matter what. So, if we do the instructional materials pilots and they're successful, then we'll use those as an expansion of that. If we end up not adopting those materials, we'll use these to push out to school sites to use on 100 various sites.
My concern is back in May of 2015, and it's on our future agenda items, has been for a year, is a report on our one-to-one program. And to this date, I met with you one time and got a summary of, but the board has never been given a report on where we're going with the one-to-one. And it sounds like here's 500-some thousand dollars that has nothing to do with the one-to-one, using all the parcel tax money. And we haven't had a report on how much money there is in the Invest for Learning Program.
So, I would differentiate, the one-to-one pilot we did was a device pilot. This is an instructional materials pilot, and I know it might seem like semantics, but it's really not. In order to do the instructional materials pilot that we need to do, where we're looking to use digital materials, we need devices to deliver those digital materials. If we don't have the devices, we can't do the pilots.
It would have been nice to have it all at one time instead of 300,000 here and 500,000 there. But it begs the question is, are we, are we going to go ahead with the one-to-one? I mean, is there any, and if so, where's that money coming from? Could this money have been used for the one-to-one if we're going to be serious about that? It just seems that we haven't had a full report on where we're going technology-wise. And this is another $600,000 using funds that if, if we hadn't had that thing two weeks ago, these funds would have probably gone to expand one-to-one possibly.
But these devices could, so, again, I think it's semantics, but it matters. These devices will support, if we eventually go to a one-to-one, it's going to be because of our instructional materials dictate that, not just because we want to put devices in the hands of kids just to do it. We want to deliver curriculum on devices.
What have we been doing for the last three years?
So, for the last three years, we had what I would call a, a device pilot where we had no expectations. We gave devices to teachers. We said, see how this device changes your instruction. And what you're, and lots of teachers have done amazing things with it. The difference between that and this is this is very directed around instructional materials.
Could we, I can ask a question in terms of this. Is this a time-sensitive item?
It, it very much is because we need to get the devices ordered if we're going to roll out the pilots in the timeframe that we are planning on.
So, one thing we can do is to try to, by the next meeting, answer Mr. Herron's question, which I think is an important question at this juncture because we've had some discussion, but we haven't come back sort of full circle to close the loop, so to speak. And I think, I think it's an important question to answer, especially as we are a board that is transitioning to a new board. And I think, and having a new superintendent, I think is, is a good time for us to kind of stop, pause and say, what have we done? What direction we want to do? And just to try to be, as a board and staff, be on the same page and be able to communicate in a really good, effective way to the community, this is what we envision. I think that's what's missing here and I think that's perhaps reflective of what Mr. Herron's trying to ask. And I think in that regard, it, it does go back to not having a report on the one-to-one and not feeling like we have a base from which to sort of stand on and then move forward from. So, that's why you're hearing a little bit of reluctance on that part.
I completely understand.
Yeah.
So, just to be clear, is, is what I'm hearing that there, we are tabling this until we have a report on the one-to-one iPad?
No, no, I'm suggesting that we do approve it, but that we get a report by the next meeting, that we know exactly how this piece fits in along with the other piece that Mr. Herron was talking about in terms of the one-to-one pieces, how all of those pieces move and fit, fit together as we move forward.
Yeah, and the key is, we've had the one-to-one, one-to-one pilot. We don't know if it worked or not. We have no idea. We don't know financially if it worked, we don't know if it worked in the classroom, we don't have a result of the survey that I think were taken. I think you showed me the results of basic, and at last I heard it was going to the Teacher Learning Advisory Committee.
Which we met yesterday with the TELAC. We talked about whether or not that's the play. There have been a lot of discussions around what we're going to do with curricular materials. And it's widely accepted that we want to move in a direction where we're using digital materials, but we don't have devices to, except at our one-to-one schools, we don't have devices to deliver instructional materials that are digital.
And how did the, we gave teachers iPads, and I think during the summer or the end of last year, we bought iPads for every teacher. Has that been implemented? Did that work?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
I think all of that is, before November 15th, my last meeting, I would, I would love to see where we are and what we're leaving the new school board.
I would really like to present that to you.
I think, I think what I'm suggesting is that we approve it, based on the, on what I'm hearing Mr. Rickman say, which is that regardless, we are moving in a direction that we're going to have instructional materials on, in a digital format and that we need these devices in order to deliver that.
Correct.
So, I would suggest, my, my suggestion would be to approve this, have a report back, look at the pieces that we talked about as a board and, and really look at how all those pieces fit well together. What is our vision at this point in time? What will it look like even a year from now, two years from now? What do we have to consider as we move forward in terms of all these pieces?
Ms. Limon.
And I guess I'm a little hesitant, and this isn't a personal thing, it's just a process thing in the sense that we've already invested how many million into this? And 600,000, I don't think is chump change. And so, to not understand the direction that this district is going in and approve 600,000, I think as a matter of process, makes me feel uncomfortable, not because it's not what's needed, but because we don't have an update. And so, what happens if we wait two weeks? I mean, does the whole plan go to waste? I mean, the next meeting is September 26th and if we could have a conversation about it, get an update, because unfortunately, I think there's been a few items that have come to us where we got to vote now, but there's not enough background or information to, to understand. Like, I'm like, I'm sure this is a great plan, but I don't know it.
I, I, if we wait two weeks, it pushes, depending on how quickly we get devices delivered, I, I don't know because I don't know how quickly we're going to get devices delivered. I know that it takes a while. The one thing that I want to add though is, I want to make sure that I articulated, hopefully clearly, that this is for an instructional materials pilot. And we're getting, I think that, what I hear the board saying is that you're trying, you're tying this into, and understandably so, the one-to-one pilot. To me, they're different, they're different. I see from the board's perspective how they might seem the same, but if we're going to be delivering instructional materials and not buying hardbound books, if we're going to be delivering electronic instructional materials and not buying hardbound books, we have no way of delivering those materials unless we buy devices.
Dr. Drouin.
Well, just to clarify any confusion that may, that may exist, and I fully understand where the confusion may be coming from. Three years ago, three or four years ago, when we brought up the deal of the pilot, pilot of iPads, the question was a different question we were trying to address. The question now is a different one. So, I agree that we have to bring both to you so that way you understand the pictures that we're seeing.
And I would, I would add that I think that when we did the one-to-one pilot, we were looking to replace computers. That was what we were thinking about. We were looking at apps. If you remember, I talked to the board about the various apps that teachers could use with students. That's not what we're looking to do now. We're looking to replace textbooks. So, it's a completely different direction.
Right, and I, so what I'm hearing you all say is that the how is different, but to me, the what is the same. The what is, we are making choices about how to invest money in technology to improve student outcomes, to help students get to speed. The what has not changed for me, and I think that that's where I'm at. This is one of the multiple hows to address the what. And I appreciate that this is a different, this is about instructional materials and not the, the use of the one-to-one, but the overarching, you know, direction hasn't really been shared with me.
Aye.
And I think that that's where I'm struggling, that we can have the conversations about how you use technology, but in the end, the vote that's taking place is whether or not we're going to, you know, approve using money for technology purposes for students.
And I think that if Mr. Matsuioko is here, he would be able to articulate that to you because this is part of his plan to do these, these teaching material pilots, instructional material pilots.
Dr. Drouin.
We can table this, bring both back at the next meeting, I believe.
I think that, I think at this point in time, the board probably is in that, in that sentiment.
And I'd be curious, so, the, for the pilot of instructional materials, we don't even know the sites, potentially those could overlap with where the one-to-one iPads are, is that correct?
That's correct.
I mean, so therefore, this maybe would be something where we wouldn't need as many of those iPads to handle.
So, I guess that's true, except I have a strong feeling we're going to be adopting instructional materials that are digital format. So, these devices won't go to waste. I understand Ms. Limon's point about the process and getting, I, I understand.
I think the report that showed us what we have, what is being asked as needed. And yes, maybe the semantics are different when you look at one-to-one and instructional materials replacement, but like you're saying, it's still a tool to provide something. So, I would be in favor of tabling it until next week.
Yeah, in the spirit of clarity and transparency, just based on this conversation, I'd rather, I'm sure I speak for cabinet members, Dr. Matsuioko, that bringing this back and providing that clarity is very important for us.
And I just want to point out that the board did receive at one point in time, I don't remember the meeting, but we did receive a report in terms of the number of technology devices that we have as a district. We have gone through that part. So, we do have that as a part of our record. We could bring it back or update it at this point in time.
And also just get a general direction. Like, I, I think everyone's working as hard as they can in trying to put all the pieces together, but I just, I mean, this was part of a conversation when we were doing interviews for the superintendent. And so, I'm actually just not clear that I know the direction three months into it.
I think, I think that's, I think I would agree with the board in this regard. This is the part that I was trying to articulate, I think as a board, we're not seeing the pieces.
I, I totally understand.
And I think for us, I think it's really important, not only as a board, but I think as a district, that we're trying to articulate back to the community and try to find a way to say, we can justify $590,000 being spent on, on devices and find a way that we could say it with a straight face and know exactly where we're going on. And I think that's part of the issue we're faced with.
Completely understand.
Mr. Herron.
I'll just end with this. You know, two weeks ago, we talked about focus on math, elementary two to three pilots, secondary two to three pilots, with a limit of 50,000 per pilot, so probable maximum 300,000 for this project. And tonight, we're asking for $600,000 to do that 300,000 with the pilots. The irony, I just, to me, it's just an irony of, I can't believe to spend 600 because we want to do 300,000 in pilots. It does, it's just sort of funny.
I, I think we need to put this within a context too, and perhaps one of the points that could be brought back to the board in terms of this is, when we look at utilizing devices versus cost of purchasing materials in terms of traditional formats, books and stuff, what would that cost difference be? I think it's helpful for the board to understand that part.
Okay.
Okay, so we're going to table this item. We will move on to the next item, number nine. Thank you.
And Ms. Parker could change our minds.
I will not jump in at this point, no. I think that's what you're, what I'm hearing the tail end of is, is very appropriate, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We are moving to item number nine, approval of 2015-16 fiscal year unaudited actuals. We've got a package in our mail. I didn't bring it.
I apologize for being in the binder and not in the, but my skills at this is less than that. My assistant's out, so, personal matter. So, the 2015-16 fiscal year books have been closed and the unaudited actuals have been presented to you in the SACS format. And also, there is a narrative. And I'm, the unaudited actuals are as it is, what, what, how we actually finished the year. And so, I wrote a narrative in there and explaining the differences.
Where is the narrative?
Where is the narrative?
Right there. That's the narrative, right there.
One page.
The very first page.
Oh, that's the narrative.
So, I have to say, I think I'm so used to the executive summaries that I was like, oh, there are none. So, I get it, this is the narrative now.
It's the nose below the table.
I noticed there's really no cover page, but I looked back in my previous years, there's really no summary right on the front either. So, basically, it is what it is, but I'm, I know there's going to be lots of questions, so I thought that we would just start off with the questions.
Board, any questions?
Oops, sorry.
Well, of course, you know, what I went to immediately was the ending fund balance. And, and then I also went to the ending fund balance in the future years. And so, I don't know if you want to talk about that.
I would love to. So, a good summary of what's going on is on page three and four. So, I'll start on four and then go back to three for more explanation. So, at, when you adopt a budget in June, you don't know everything and that's, that's typical. And we, and you're basing it on how you're going to end the end of the year with your estimated actuals, which was fine-tuned after second interim due to the 4% increase that we gave. So, you estimate that, here's what we think we're going to end the school year, and then the actuals are what actually happens. So, what I did on the page four was to say, okay, let's put in our new ending fund balance and let the money flow through as if the bud, adopted budget is untouched. and let the money flow through as if the adopted budget is untouched, nothing changes, which we know that's not gonna happen, first interim is right around the corner, and our assumptions as the adopted budget was developed. And those assumptions, whether they occur, and we were planning on going through that in October of what our assumptions will be, and I'm sure they will change in 1718 and 1819 for the first interim. So, what I did is I let the new ending fund balance on the unrestricted side only flow through all the way to 2018-19. And it's kind of a summary, and it has the unaudited, I mean, the unrestricted side of the budget and then special reserve fund 17. So, let's just focus on the unrestricted side of the budget. So, you have the beginning fund balance of 18, the revenues of 130, and the expenses of 133. So, we're planning on deficit spending 3.2 million.
What does the exclude 2 million reduction mean?
That is for 1718 and 1819. If you remember when we were in the adopted budget, I had put in the reductions that we had planned on or in our assumptions, but then I put in the 2 million for 1718 and the 2 million. I decided since we ended the year better, that let's take that out and see how we flow, because no one wants to reduce their budget beyond what you want in the budget, you know, like, extra. So, I thought, let's do that and see how it works out. And so, that's what I have done. I didn't do that in 1617, because the adopted budget remains exactly the same, it never changes. But my assumptions, I made different assumptions. So, that...
So, if that assumption hadn't been changed, instead of 6.6 million, it would've been 4.6.
Correct.
So, if you, the previous, we were gonna be forced to make $2 million reduction.
In addition.
And now, we've changed it, say, oh, don't worry about that, we'll just operate at $6.5 million loss.
But there's a planned reason for that loss, and I want to get back, I want to talk about that a little bit. But let me continue on down the road here. So, in 1617, at that moment in time, what were your assumptions? We assumed that we would deficit spend 3.2 million and have an ending fund balance of 14.7. So, then you take out the 3% reserve, and then you have the assigned ending fund balance of 5.8. So, then on the 3.9 is basically above and beyond. So, the 5.8 is that mandated money that we have had sitting in the account plus additional mandated money we're getting in 1617, because we're deciding what we're gonna do with our instructional materials. And so, what we spent in 1516 did not materialize like we had planned, so it rolls into the ending fund balance, which we account for it on page three. So, on page three, you will see all the things that we have budgeted that we were, that are in the ending fund balance, that we plan at some point in time between 1617 and 2020 to spend. Okay? So, that's 7.3 million. So, as we go through these multi-years, part of that 7 million is dispersed in those three years, 1617, 1718, and 1819. So, what I want to point out here is in 1819, the ending fund balance is 4.7 million. If you look at the components of ending fund balance, which is, I mean, I'm sorry, our 3% recommended reserve, we're short by $52,000. But not only that, is of that 4.7, 803 is projected to be spent, the remaining amount of that, in 1819, we're planning to spend $803,000 of that mandated money. So, in theory, we're about $855,000 below our unrestricted reserve amount. So, we wouldn't be able, if all assumptions remain the same, and as I said, we're gonna go through this really harshly in October at our monthly strategic. So, these, this may change a lot, but just as our assumptions that we had at adopted budget, this is what we're figuring, that at some point in 1819, we will have to start dipping into our 17, fund 17, our special reserve. Does that answer your question?
Then, just to clarify, looking at that 1819 column, when you talk about that 3.3%, if things weren't to change, in fact, that number would be less, because we need to make the components of the ending fund balance, that needs to be at 3%. So, it wouldn't be, it's actually kind of hard to read, the beginning fund balance would be 6,997, and then there's all these, so it looks like the ending fund balance is supposed to be 6.197, but we would have to put that into the required ending fund balance, the state, and some of that, if we didn't change anything in order to keep it 3%.
Right. We would have to change something in 1819, and I would say you would have to reduce the budget by about $855,000 to make your unrestricted fund, your general fund, hold the 3%. If you choose not to hold the 3% there, you can rely on your fund 17, but I know that that's not what the board's intent. So, yes, you're correct, in 1819, if all assumptions remain the same and nothing changes as of this moment in time, we would be, we would need to reduce the budget by 803, or 855,000.
And that's just to get to zero, above fund 17.
Just to get 3%, but then we would still have our fund 17, which would be holding the 5%. I mean, I'm sorry, the 6.1, but we have things, we have 5 million unaccounted for in that fund. I shouldn't say unaccounted for, but unassigned.
So, the 3.3% in 1819, is the majority of that our $4 million that we put into fund 17?
The 3.3%, I didn't write what that was, I apologize, is, I would have to go back and look at my spreadsheet on that. It was so long ago, but I can put that, I can give you that in a memo tomorrow. And I apologize for that, I should've had that written out, what that is, because the 3% is up here, 4.7, and you add 5 to that, I'm sure that would make it, you know, more like 6. So, maybe this is the 3% is down here for this, you know, this is an additional 3%. But I, can I get back to you on that?
Sure.
I just have a timeline question. So, in October, you sit down, you look at the numbers again, and then the election happens in November, and things can stay exactly as you're planning for now, or they can move. At what point do you reassess based on any potential impact of the election? Is that January?
Well, the...
Or later?
The election is not gonna hap, if you're talking about Prop 55. Okay, so, remember that Prop 30 expires 1819. So, Prop 55, to my knowledge, is extending after that.
So, it will have no impact on the 1819 budget? It will have an impact on 1920?
Right. So, that would be my multi-year projection. So, when you're coming down to adopted budget, which we will miss you because you won't be here, but when we start working on our adopted budget for 1718, the election would there, would very much be there, because we would now be in 1918, or 1920 for our multi-year.
And I think that that's just important to note, that independent of what happens in November, we are still projecting that there will need to be some changes in the coming two fiscal years to meet our obligations.
Yes. And, you know, I mean, you guys have been on this board a long time. Think about 2012, think about 2011. If, think about, would we have known in 2010-11 what 1213 or 1314 would have brought? We're saying there's never any more one-time funds, because that's what Governor Brown says, but every year, I come to you and say, we got one-time funds again, we got one-time funds. I can't tell you what, it all depends on our top 1% of the state of California and what the governor gives us.
Ms. Herr.
But if somebody asks a simple question, based on, just looking at these numbers, that we're gonna run this operation with a 12 million deficit for the next three years, how do you explain that that doesn't sound like a...
Well, you have to remember that 7 million of it is sitting in fund balance waiting to be spent. So, if we're holding on to that money, and we have a plan, our, you know, budget is just this moment in time, so we're developing, you know, things have changed, instructional materials, the place we're going, we would've never thought about a pilot six months ago. So, you know, it's always changing. But the 7 million, think about that, 7 million is...
Does that have to be spent? I mean...
Well, that's up to the board, but if we want instructional materials, that's, and professional development, actually, most, some of it does need to be spent, because we have two days coming out of that and three days next year. That's funding that.
The intent of those funds were given one time for school districts to implement, to purchase instructional materials. If you remember, there hasn't been any money given to school districts to purchase textbooks or any instructional materials for a long time. So, the state essentially said, there's $7 million one time, you'll have to be able to do that and provide professional learning. So, we hail on to that in order to have a more of a robust plan without just spending it, without thinking through it. So, so, part of the process of the pilot, we talked about, is all incorporated in there.
Ms. Idles.
I remember the Common Core money, is that all spent?
That's all gone. You had a time limit on that.
Right, okay.
I'd like to bring one other thing to your attention. One page, 138. This is in the SACS software, and it's called the CEA, and it's basically the current expenditures actual. And it's basically your total expenditures is your denominator, and your numerator is your teacher's in the classroom salary. And as a unified school district, we need to be at 55%. And if you go down to the very bottom in the last text file, it says a unified school district is 55%, and the district is coming to 54.71. So, we're 0.29% under. So, what does this mean? I am asking the county to get an exemption from this because of several reasons. One, when you have one time and you're increasing the denominator, and even though you increase the numerator by giving the 4%, we also gave everyone else a 4%, so that hit the denominator. So, if you're spending one-time funds, or you have one-time expenditures anywhere in the budget, it increases that, so it will, the percentage will be less. I believe that this should be an exemption, part of the exemption, and they haven't changed the CEA form to represent all this one-time funds. If we extracted the one-time funds that we got out of the mandated money, that we spent the mandated money, we would come to $51,000 that we were under. So, you can just imagine what, next year, if we spend $4 million on instructional materials, even 7 million if we decided that, how that's gonna skew that number. But I've asked the district, the county, I have a letter to them and explanation of why, and got comparative salaries from the state of California, and we are right in there as far as we're above some and below others. But I'm gonna turn that in and hope that they give us an exemption. So, any questions?
Yeah, because I guess one question I have is, it's not just salary, it's also class size. I mean, our, I don't know how we compare in class size to other districts. I've never, I haven't seen us as having unusually large classes, but that's a question mark. But I was struck by that, because I have never seen this happen before, and I don't know why it wouldn't have happened before, because we've had one-time money issues building up to this year. And then, I guess the other question is, has the county granted exemptions in the past? And if not, is it something that ends up going to the state board? What ends up happening?
No, it ends at the county, and yes, they have done exemptions. I had a long conversation with John Gray, the president of SSC, because I was asking him, what are other districts in the state doing? I mean, there's gotta be people like us all over the, he goes, it's more common than ever. And the thing is, that he says, is they haven't changed the form to represent what's going on. And so, he just suggested I, you know, do the exemption, ask for the exemption, and I spoke to my district financial advisor, and I spoke to VTD, our auditors, and they're all aware of it, and they're waiting for it to come. And so, they say yea or nay.
But what does happen if they say nay?
If they do say nay, I would think that we would have to allocate some funds to teacher salaries. And only teachers in the classroom. And it's, you know, we have about 650 teachers in the classroom, do the math on 376,000. It's not a lot of money, but we'll do what the county tells us to do.
My only question is a little bit in response to Ms. Parker's comment about our class size. When is the last time we, as a board, received any information about class size?
Well, I mean, we get information about the class size whenever the contract's up for negotiation, but, and when it's finalized, but there hasn't been, that hasn't been an area of dramatic change recently, except for English for freshmen. But certainly, it's something that we could get an update on what's actually going on, as opposed to what theoretically could go on according to the contract.
And you're talking about statewide? What's like the average statewide? What's...
Well, I think both. I'm really thinking about both. I'm thinking about, anecdotally, I hear of teachers teaching more kids than, than perhaps we would like to see in terms of class size. But that doesn't necessarily mean it's a bad thing, it just means that it's just happening. So, I'm curious to find out, when is that, or how is that occurring? What are we looking at, is it different in different grades? Obviously, you know, secondary to elementary, no question about it, but beyond that, are there certain areas that we're not, we're having more or not? What's happening?
I can tell you K3 stain average is 25 and under, because that's what the contract says, and we get penalized with LCFF if we don't. So, we watch that very closely. But we can get you that information.
Board, any other questions, comments? Ms. Parker?
No, but I'll move approval of the 1516 fiscal year unaudited actuals.
Do I have a second?
I will second. I do have another follow-up question. When will the county let us know?
Well, I will be dropping it off tomorrow, so I would assume within a week or so.
Okay. And I'm guessing you'll update us on the outcome of that.
I will, you know. Thank you.
Question made by Ms. Parker, seconded by Ms. Limon. All of the favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. That moves us to item number 10, approval of revised local control accountability plan. Dr. Dready.
The Santa Barbara County Office of Education received the Santa Barbara Unified School District's local control accountability plan, which was approved by the board on June 28, 2016. After reviewing the SBUSD's LCAP, the county office identified some areas needing clarification related to elements of the California State Board of Education requirements, that districts submit LCAPs using the state template, and that the county office reviews the three specific elements. So, there are some areas that they had questions about or needed more clarification on, which was adherence to the state template, and I'll explain that in the... And I'll explain that in a little bit. Sufficient expenditures in the budget to implement LCAP. I'll explain where the confusion was on that also. And adherence to the state expenditure regulations. We worked with the Santa Barbara County Office of Education staff to discuss these clarifications in greater detail. All result, as a result, their recommended adjustments have been made, tentatively approved by the county office. And staff is now submitting the revised LCAP to Board of Approval. And it's a pretty complex task to do this. So there are two documents that you received over the weekend. One is a document that has a lot of markings on it. And I'll go through that just to point to you elements, those three elements, and how we made those changes. And there's a second document that actually has the changes and highlighted where those changes are so you can cross-reference that information. So maybe we'll start, Mr. Brian, can you, Mr. Ralph, can you... Let's first go to the one that says 2016 Local Control Accountability Plan. And if you scroll to page 16. There you go, right there. So this page illustrates some of the changes that we made from the old version. And you would have to toggle back to the other document to see the changes. But in here, you'll see some changes to, let's go to say, under Action Services, you'll see some changes that we had there. If you can blow it up more. Item number three, we crossed that out. But under there, we put down information that did not exist regarding how we aligned the single plans with the LCAP. Previously, we never did that, we haven't done that. But this time around, the county office said that needs to exist because we need to show how sites are implementing the LCAP and that way is through the alignment with the SPSAs. So we need to, but we need to be expressive with that. Also, if you go to the right of that document, where according to the template, and this is all aligned to the first bullet, adheres to the state template, where identified the different expenditures. Our template that we used through DTS is an organization that we contracted with to make this work simpler. Didn't have expenditures broken out by the categories that the state wanted. In there, they wanted, we put, some of the funds were split-funded with general funds and also supplemental funds. But in identifying that split fund, we said general funds instead of LCSF base. So that was something they didn't want us to do. So throughout the document, what you'll see is that we substituted the general funds with LCSF base. So that's throughout the document and that's aligned to that bullet. I'm going to scroll, so if you go back to the document that's been corrected, you'll see the changes there. I'm going to scroll to page 23. This situation is also aligned to bullet number three, which is adherence to the state template. We needed to be very explicit as we described what funds went to all students and what funds went to students that are unduplicated. And in there, in page, in our first draft, we separated it in the first year. But the second year, we didn't sow that separation. So throughout the document, in the preceding years, we went through and actually made those adjustments. And we made it mirror what the information was in the first year. My question to them at that point was that, well, we don't know what's going to happen the following years. And we can't make those predictions because we may evaluate some programs and change them. But according to them, we need to make sure it's similar, it's the same. So if there is going to be a change, we need to explain it that following year. So throughout the document, you'll see that the subsequent years after this year were also adjusted to mirror the first year. So if you were to go back to the original document that's been completed, you'll see those changes. So that addresses all of what you will see in bullet number one, the questions they had. The other two bullets are addressed in Section 3A. And if we can scroll to page 130. 130. Okay. This is Section 3A of the template. And this is where we actually describe every item. We describe every item that is paid out of supplemental funds. And so several things impacted, several things were confusing to the county office, rightfully so. And they gave us some good guidance on it. But this impacts bullet number two, sufficient expenditures in the budget to implement LCAP and adherence to the state expenditure regulations. The issue with bullet number one was that up top there where CEA crossed out $8 million, we put in $10 million. In there, we initially did not take credit for some of the donations that we received from the community of schools program, the PEAK program from the community. But we identified it in the expenditure. We took credit in terms of we getting the donations, but we didn't count it as a part of that. So making that adjustment would mean that we need to, yeah.
And so do you have to do that from here on forward?
Yes.
Anytime that you receive any extra funds that go towards support LCAP items, they need to be listed on here?
Yes. If we are, so the confusion occurred is that what they're saying is, based on their calculations, that we should have identified $10 million worth of services. What we were saying is that we do have $10 million, but about at one point, whatever million was a part of the community of schools program. The state said we can actually take that credit. It's just, I think we didn't, maybe in my point, I thought, well, I don't want to put that there because they're talking about supplemental funds, not necessarily donations.
And so this will actually be very interesting for reporting purposes as we go through the next LCAP because we've always understood this is LCAP money, we're accounting for LCAP money. And yes, there's been extramural, what's the equivalent, funding that comes for this. But it's not LCAP money. And we actually don't have, as a board, the flexibility over that money. That's been designated.
Absolutely.
So this will be very interesting in the next reiteration of the review process.
Yeah, I would agree. I think it's kind of interesting even to look at it sort of in a different, way different way. Because now we're, we don't have control over the money. But we do have to account for the money and look at it as if it was part of our funding.
And it is primarily because we identified that all through the LCAP, that is one of the things that we're doing to support our unduplicated students.
We are allowed to take credit for like-kind or any kind of contribution. So when we looked at the PEAK program and they said, "Well, you're pulling X amount of dollars out of your supplemental money." But PEAK, an outside entity, is putting in a million. And I said, "Well, we can take credit for that." So the cash isn't going out, but we get to go, I mean, you know how it always builds every year, how much due to the gap funding? That's our expected amount, is the 10 million. We have to say, "What are you spending the 10 million on?" Even though only 8.5 goes out or 8.6 or whatever. That 10 is our total, it's services. It's not just cash, it can be like services. So that was helpful.
And then Brian, one more item, if you can, go to page 135. Just to finalize the details of second bullet. That adjustment we made also impacted the percentage in this document here. So instead of 8.13, we adjusted to 9.34. So that, those changes addressed bullet number two. The last bullet is addressed because we weren't, we were not very explicit in explaining how the supplemental funds principally impacted the unduplicated students based on some of our decisions. Especially when we said, especially when the funds were spent for all students. So, for example, when we identified testing, I'm trying to find, if we, Brian, if you can scroll up to 130 again. So I'm looking at two documents here. So if you, some of the areas where you, if we identified, say, the I Result is a program that we wanted to use for all students. We did use supplemental funds, part of the money, it's a split-funded item. But the question was, well, if it's, why are you using supplemental funds to support all students? What we have to demonstrate is how critical that is in support of all students, but particularly the unduplicated students. So I was a lot more explicit in explaining how and why we think spending those funds on all students was important. And also, based on research or our data, that supports why we made those decisions. So in this document that you're looking at, you don't necessarily see the changes. So we would need to go to the other document, Mr. Ralph. Maybe you can pull that up and I'll explain the difference. And the other document is page 137. So if you can, for example, just take a second to read the I Result. You'll see how is this different from what you saw in the previous piece.
We definitely have more sentences there.
So this is throughout the document, I think you can see the difference here. So what you see in the second document is all the changes. We have several meetings with county office. They've tenderly said this is good. But I didn't want to bring this to you before they affirmed it. So they're giving me the okay to say it looks good. So I'm bringing all of this to you for approval.
Ms. Parker?
As you know, Dr. Droudi, I appreciate the clarification. Because I looked at this and because the file name says 2015 Local Control and Accountability Plan Update, I assumed it was the 2016 one. I don't know if this needs to be renamed, but it is the 2016 update. This is what we're seeing highlighted here now as part of the document that is actually being given to the county education office.
Yes, I would need to, so that disclaimer needs to be clear, especially for the public, that the name needs to be consistent.
Yeah. And I think that, I know none of us like this template. It is, it's too long to read frankly in detail. But I think that, you know, as you call out these changes, it is really, it is a much improved document this way. And I appreciate the county, you know, paying that kind of attention to it. And I know I've been seeing on agendas for other districts as well. You know, there are about 20 odd districts and a number of them are going through the same revision process with the county. And I think that this clarifies things and the template will change again and we'll have to figure the next one out. But this was really helpful. And I also wanted just to call out, because I had said this to you in an email, and that is just that, you know, we talk about the unduplicated pupil count, but the K6 number is at about 70%.
Yeah.
And so I think that outsiders in particular who don't understand the structure of our district and look at that overall number where we're less than 55% do not necessarily understand that when we're doing things school-wide at the elementary level, it's because it is an overwhelming number of students that are low socioeconomic or are English learners or foster children. And so it's, it really, all students is, it's a vast majority that fall in that category. It's not the same as secondary.
Other questions, comments? Do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve the revised local control accountability plan.
I'll second.
Motion made by Ms. Parker, seconded by Ms. Lemon. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That moves us to the conference agenda. Item number one, federal program review update. Dr. Droudi.
At this time, I'd like to bring up Dr. Ramirez to do the honors of presenting this information.
Good evening once again, Board. Dr. Paz. What you've had an opportunity to preview already is really now looking at more than a year's worth of work of collaborative efforts throughout the district to try to bring together a review process that we've, that really tries to address some of the same populations that you hinted at, Ms. Parker. So what I'm presenting to you today really is focusing on the outcome of the review and what has happened since then as we've tried to work with CDE and also ensure that we are appropriately revisiting our procedures and revisiting our processes to make sure that we're in a better position moving forward. So just to, and you've had access to the narrative that we provided so that hopefully that can provide some more details. But I'd like to just go forward and feel free to ask questions as they come up. So the review was conducted in April 2016, so it was conducted earlier this spring. And you have here a review of the actual federal programs that were under review. We had a total of six, ranging from compensatory education all the way through uniform complaint procedures. And you were in the, well, I'll get to that in a minute. But there were three sites that were selected specifically for review. Our review happened to be an online review. So there is a tool literally called the California Monitoring Tool, CMT, where we, that was our interface. And so we created an opportunity to gather evidence pertaining to each one of these items and then uploaded those for review during our review window, which extended for about 30 days prior to April 15. And during that process, so again, when we talk about it being a year-long process, it pretty much was in terms of setting up working committees, working groups, and ensuring clarity around the type of evidence that we needed to gather. But these were the three sites and which is why you'll see, well, you've seen this document before so you can certainly ask questions pertaining to those as well. In terms of the notification of findings, so after the process was concluded, what happened at that point is there were certain areas that we needed to resolve. Things that didn't seem to be, where we either didn't have clear evidence or there was, or where there was still some lack of clarity between ourselves and CDE. But if you look at this overall, in three of the six programs, there were no findings. So that means that there were items where the evidence was substantial and where we were able to really operate in the spirit of that particular program. So as you see there, before and after-school programs, improving teacher quality and uniform complaint procedures were areas where we did exceptionally well. And in the EL program, there was one finding. In compensatory ed, there were 12. And in fiscal monitoring, there were two. And you have there the total items that were reviewed on the middle column. So in compensatory ed, this is essentially a summary of the, what the findings entailed. And there were really four large areas. One was single plans for student achievement. And that was primarily ensuring that there was appropriate documentation for the school self-counsel approval process. Oftentimes what this called for was ensuring that we provided enough evidence for the appropriate level of decision-making and input process that was captured by way of minutes and agendas that we can then turn over for that to be sufficient. communication between our site leadership and that school site council. Another component is an annual evaluation of activities, and this one specifically calls for an evaluation of, um, activities relative to titles, the titles, Title I, Title II, or Title III. Um, in school site council, uh, there was another, another finding around the composition, and it wasn't because our school site councils were not appropriately composed of, of the right stakeholder groups, but rather, there were some technicalities that we, uh, we didn't address appropriately, in terms of how those, uh, people came to, came to be selected. So it, it really comes down to the appropriate ballots, and making sure that those processes are very, very clear for our stakeholders. Um, there's also parent notifications, um, and two specifically, having to do with our parent involvement policies, uh, both at the district and school level, and our program improvement efforts, uh, that needed to, to really, uh, to be, uh, much more precise. And finally, uh, alternative governance, an alternative governance structure, and Ms. Wagenek will be giving you much more information relative to that particular finding as well. For our EL program, um, we wanted to, we, our, our finding came in the supplement not supplant with Title III. Title III is intended for, uh, what the, what we consider English learner students, but the federal government, uh, classifies as unlimited English proficient, and these are students that, um, these are, obviously are, are one of our most at-need population, and, um, really this has to do with, uh, ensuring that Title III services go above and beyond, to ensure that there are direct services to those students, um, in order to, um, again, supplement not supplant. Federal monies, uh, what we've traditionally considered categorical, categorical funds, are intended to provide additional support beyond what is already appropriated, um, through supplemental, I'm sorry, base or supplemental funds. Finally, in the area of fiscal monitoring, there were two, two key points. Uh, one was timekeeping requirements, um, and that's just maintaining, again, an appropriate accounting of time records, um, with, um, individuals being paid from Title I or Title III, to be very precise, and to have an accurate depiction and reflection of work rendered. Um, in terms of funding, we needed to ensure, one of the findings indicated, um, having a consistent distribution with allocation formulas, and, um, and, and prove evidence of that, as well as SPSAs, including an appropriate expenditure of allocated funds. So those, those were, um, pieces that were, uh, where there was not enough evidence to be able to, to avoid a finding. So, so this area now gets us into what are called corrective actions, and, um, we are, the moment that April 15th hit, we were now under the clock, and we had, um, a maximum of 225 days, although, uh, the first, the first allocation was of 30 days. We've since asked for, um, a series of, of extensions, providing rationale as to why we would need that, uh, over the subsequent months, and, um, and essentially, uh, part of the corrective actions, or in order to get at these corrective actions, there was a need to transfer funds from unrestricted, from unrestricted funds or unrestricted sources, in order to address actions that were considered unallowable by Title I or Title III. So what that means is that those funds, we, because we couldn't provide enough, uh, evidence to support some of the points that Dr. Droudi was making earlier about Title I, who was primarily aimed at, uh, students failing to, to, uh, reach grade level, uh, or demonstration of, of being, uh, not at grade level, um, as well as our ELs and Title III. And Title III are typically what we would consider, uh, super restricted, in the sense that they have to pass through, in order to meet the supplement not supplant rule, they need to pass through base, supplemental, Title I, and Title III. So, so they're, they're the most restricted funds, uh, in many ways. Um, we also needed to ensure that, um, program improvement mandates will continue into 16, 17, including the alternative governance structure. Now, what that means is that, uh, with the onboarding of Every Student Succeeds Act in December of 2016, uh, that is what ushered in a different era from NCOB. Due to our findings in the spring, we need to carry that forward one more year, and that's, and we're doing that already this year. Uh, we also needed to ensure that our supplemental educational services would continue through July of 2017, uh, through this, essentially through this, uh, school year. So in terms of what we've done since then, again, to address these corrective actions, and to continue to position ourselves to ensure that we have, uh, more close oversight, and better working relationships with our sites, to, to ensure that we are serving our obligation to be, um, to provide the appropriate level of guidance, um, we've, we've established district-level teams that are working interdepartmentally, and, uh, those requests, as I mentioned earlier, for extensions on specific items have been, um, addressed on an ongoing basis with our specific program reviewers, with each one of those items, and, um, and those, those have, have come into this year as standing meetings that are, again, interdepartmental. Uh, in the last, um, in the last few months, we have cleared numerous items, and we have, um, and we are in a good position, for example, around fiscal monitoring, to conclude with those findings as early as the end of the month. So there have been a number of actions that, a number of, um, collaborative efforts that have gotten to, gotten us to a point where, where we're on track to clear those findings by, uh, November. So, if you have any questions.
Ms. Lemon and Ms. Parker.
Thank you. Uh, you know, our experience has been that, there have been times where we've had reports, and it's, um, how we reported that dinged us, as opposed to us doing something wrong. And, am I correct in hearing that for compens, uh, is it compensatory?
Compensatory.
Compensatory. Education, it was a matter of not reporting correctly, as opposed to actually making mis, uh, programmatic or fiscal mistakes, is that correct?
Can you clarify what you mean by fiscal mistakes?
So, uh, so I'm like, wait, maybe it was. Uh, did, I mean, did we actually do something wrong, or we just didn't report it correctly?
Um, it's a, it's a little bit more nuanced than that. So there, there are, there are some programming things that, um, so it, it's a little bit of both, okay? So we, when we reported, when we reported, for example, in compensatory ed, to, to focus on that, we're, we're really talking about Title I, okay? So, there, I make, one example of a finding was, uh, when supplemental educational services, which are, uh, services that we've contracted out traditionally, or historically in the district, to provide tutoring and support services above and beyond to at-need or at-risk students, uh, when, we have traditionally had to allocate a percentage of our total allocation to those funds. When, when those funds were not expensed all the way through, they would be reallocated to sites, and distributed, uh, I think in good faith, to the sites. The way in which we did that, didn't meet with programming, uh, from CDE, for example.
So let me get clarification, so the way in which we did that, but not the actual fact that we did that?
Correct. In that instance, yes, absolutely correct. Uh, we could redistribute those funds, but we needed to go through a series of steps, for example, noticing, uh, and it gets very technical, uh, one example would be noticing , uh, the public, to the extent possible, which would include outreach, for example, to faith-based organizations, where there could be additional outreach out into the community. Um, there was just a, a number of different specific items that, that were, um, that were intended, uh, to, to properly notice the public and community about those services.
So in this particular case, because I feel, at least for me as a board member, I heard a lot about this particular example that you gave, right? We heard from the districts that this was a, a change.
Sure.
Um, once this goes through this process, would that ever then re, would that ever then come back for consideration, to allocate, or is it, so once we get all of this cleared, this whole, the findings, it's clear, they're like, you're, you're ready to go, you're good again, then does that come back to, to a conversation, or is it, look, we're going to have to try it out the way we're doing it for a little while, and then we'll revisit, or we're never going to revisit?
We're going to
I'm not suggesting either.
We're certainly going to revisit, um, the most important learnings of this. So, uh, operating within this, within the spirit of supplant not supplement, I'm sorry, supplement not supplant, uh, will continue to be, we're in a, we're in a very interesting period right now, and we're in a very, uh, interesting period of flux. Uh, the 16, 17, uh, operational, um, uh, pieces of how Title I and Title III should be spent relative to the new legislation in December of 2016, I'm, I'm sorry, of 2015, um, have still not been made clear by CDE. So, that's, that's all part of what, 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 what is operating here as well. So to give you a very concrete answer, supplemental educational services will not need to be offered moving forward beyond this year for us. In fact, for everybody else in the, in, in California, they don't have to be offered as of this year. Now, districts may opt to do that, or they may reallocate those funds differently, including, uh, being able to allocate them to sites. Uh, but that's, that's something, for example, that wouldn't need to be revisited, we would just need to ensure that we're operating under new guidelines, as they become available through CDE. And we've gotten some clarity about that, but there's some clarity that even they don't have at this point.
Okay. Second question is, um, in one of your slides, you talked about the amount of funds that were transferred from unrestricted to this, can you give us a number?
Um, yes.
Please. And then as you're looking for that, I'll just throw out my third question, um, which is, once we go through this entire process, you have a plan, um, do we expect to receive a notification that we're good or in the clear, or is this monitoring process and reporting process on, um, the, in, the discrepancy is going to continue for beyond?
No, once we, once we address the findings with the appropriate corrective actions and the appropriate evidence, then we're, we're done. And we've, and we've been noticed about some of those things along the way, so, um, I mean, it's, uh, it is collective, and we, we did receive a, a document that indicated the exact, um, nature of the findings, and how they related to seat to ED code, uh, but as we've been able to provide enough evidence, we've worked diligently to clear them along the way. So, um, to, to answer your, your prior question, um...
I want to just say one thing. On his slide, it said transfers from the unrestricted side of the budget, it's transfers to the unrestricted side of the budget, because the expenditures were unallowable, so we had to take them out of the titles and put them in the unrestricted.
Oh, okay.
So it went the other way.
Gotcha.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
That's it, okay.
So, so in this case, I'll give you one example, um, coming back to the supplemental educational services. There were 134,000 that were, uh, reallocated to sites, so this meant that about 134,000 went unspent from our original allocation, which was, uh, 20% for supplemental educational services. So about 20% of our entire budget, of what we received from Title I, is held centrally in the district for supplemental educational services. Once those, once those funds are then drawn down, as parents and families decide to participate, uh, then the rest of the, of the funds, the unused funds, rather than sitting centrally, get redistributed, have traditionally been redistributed to the sites. So that number came to 134,000. Because we didn't proper, we didn't, uh, follow the proper procedures there, we needed to carry over, in addition to that 20% this year, we needed to also, um, carry over 134,000, and that's where that transfer to the general fund, uh, takes place. Now, we've been very, we, our philosophy is to make sure that that, as a district office, to make sure that the services go directly to students. So one of the things that we, that we agreed to with CDE was to allow us then, rather than hold on to that money where we just sit there, we wanted to then provide opportunities for, um, for it to, to find ways to, for it to go back to the classroom, back to sites. So what we did is, we extended, and it was in the notification of findings, that we could use it for summer learning, extended summer learning. So this allowed us to be able to carry, uh, to offer that last, this past summer, summer of 2016, to our elementary schools, and, and to our high schools, and, and be able to offset some of the cost of their summer programs. And at the elementaries, uh, uh, an academically focused, an exclusively academically focused program is something that was not really viable in years past, but because of that, we were able to, to make sure that it went back for that purpose. And, um, and, and our latest count is that about 134, 111 were spent this summer, again, extending learning to students, K6, or TK6 really, but, and also at the secondaries.
So that was one example, was there other examples? Like, is there a general lump sum of how much we're talking about, or is just?
Well, I didn't know that he was talking about, that 134 he's talking about is on the title side, it stayed on the title side, we spent the money out of the title side for just what Robles said. The, the Title III money is what I was talking about, the one that wasn't, um, spent correctly, so we had to kind of pay back Title III. So I'm, I'm kind of got the two mixed up.
Yeah, and, and again, just to be completely transparent, and that's the Title I, that's coming from compensatory ed, and Title, Title III, that, that figure was 240,000.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Parker.
Still on the compensatory ed, um, section, since that's where most of the findings were, there was the alternative government, governance piece, and I think we're going to hear a bit about that in the next item as well, and I was struck, and, and you can clarify, because we didn't get the details of what was going on with each of the schools that was looked at. Um, year five happened so long ago for some of these schools, so for example, the board approved the major restructuring plan for La Cumbre Junior High in 2006. The board approved the major restructuring plan for Santa Barbara High School in 2011. I mean, it has been so long since that happened, and I'm not sure if, you know, you can clarify for me, because we haven't approved a plan for Dos Pueblos, Dos Pueblos only went into year five in 15, 16, so that's where I could see that there would be a finding. Is that, in fact, what they were talking about, that we didn't have a restructuring plan, board approved for Dos Pueblos?
Uh, so it's actually all three. Um, it's all three sites. Um, and part of the reason for that is, has to do with the documenting, the documenting evidence of how those, the fact that an alternative governance structure wasn't fully formed, um, so procedurally, or, I'm sorry, procedurally, we didn't follow all of the accurate steps, although in the spirit, uh, we operated well within the spirit of that. And, uh, it's what we've been identifying in our consolidated application, as having been restructuring efforts. So those restructuring efforts have been carried out, they've, they've, they've been very successful in many ways, but they weren't appropriately documented along the way, where they fully formed alternative governance structure, the way that it was called for, all the way dating back to 2006. So those are, those are things that, um, we're now, um, we're now in a sense going back in time, if you will, on establishing systems that, um, where we're just not appropriately documented and procedurally followed through upon the way that they, that the way that they needed. Now, just one, one more thing on that. CDE is very aware that, that we are in this precarious and interesting place. Uh, so rather than have us start from scratch, they, they've been pretty flexible with this in terms of how to, how to be able to now document that, by also acknowledging that there were, and we, and we, about three weeks ago, two or three weeks ago, we had a phone conference with many of us at the table, to, to really ask those clarifying questions about, uh, making sure that what we were doing also wasn't going to be massively disruptive to our sites, because we didn't want to have, uh, a great reorganization when in fact that wasn't called for. And so, um, it, it has to do with those procedural missteps that were just not appropriately documented along the way.
I appreciate that, and I appreciate their flexibility, because I also feel like everything will change in one year, and so I, I hate to see, um, you know, a huge amount put into something that's going to be likely extremely be likely extremely different next year. So, I appreciate that. I also just want to give a shout out to the team that was working on this, and I don't know all the members, but I know that there were a lot that were working on this. And I just want you to know that your site administrators were so complimentary, because they were working hard on it, but they really saw that you guys were working hard on it. And, you know, when I was on sites, they would call that out, so, thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate it. And if I can just make one comment about that, you know, all along, we knew that there were going to be some things that were going to come up, because we just didn't have the evidence for it, or hadn't appropriately captured it over, over time. And our effort as a district office was to really minimize the disruption to the sites. So, we tried to take care of about as much as we could, creating systems for them to be able to submit their evidence, working with them, and just, and I really have to thank our departments here, who are able to really come together. And I think what's come out of this are better processes for how to be more vigilant, more supportive, and hopefully, that's what's also coming across in that site feedback, which we appreciate. Thank you for sharing that.
Any other questions, comments, board? Thank you. So, that moves us to item number two, report on program improvement, uniform complaint.
We have Fran, Mr. Fran Wagonag is gonna present this information.
Bless you.
Thank you. You sneezed. Thank you.
Good evening, President Paz, members of the board. As has already been mentioned, I'm here to, to really give you an update on the program improvement, uniform complaint. I do know that you've been kept aware throughout the process, and have seen the follow-up letters that have come from the CDE through the process. So, if I can just take you first, a bit through the timeline. So, in December of 2014, the, the CDE ruled based on a uniform complaint that was filed by one of our parents regarding our program improvement transfer process, that the ruling was that there was a lack of proper notification to families, that our intradistrict enrollment process was not in line with NCLB guidelines, and that we were not offering the appropriate school choice options. One of the direct results that came out of this, or actions that came out of this, were, were two revisions to board policy, one in February 2015, and another in May of 2015. We then, just short of a year ago, received another set of directives from the CDE, having submitted evidence of the change in board policies. And, and their directive at that time was that we were to revise and disseminate some of our PI notification letters specifically to those schools in years four and five. And, and I do have to say that this complaint was made specific to our elementary schools. So, the CDE was only looking at our elementary schools in, in this, in, in relation to this specific issue, contrary to federal program monitoring, which happened to be three secondary schools. So, we rewrote those, and those were sent out in the fall of last year, we submitted those to the CDE. The CDE also asked us to submit a plan to address and mitigate a lack of capacity, and I think you all, I'm sure, remember our discussions of, would we be putting a satellite campus classroom on the, at Harding for Washington? How would we mitigate that lack of capacity at the non-PI schools? And then also, they wanted us to submit the evidence that we were promoting the SES. We were able to do that, we opened up, last fall, we opened up the number of students who were, in terms of our outreach on SES, and it's interesting, in this uniform complaint, what you'll see is that the CDE said, looks good. So, in terms of elementary, they said, looks good, you've increased the number of students that you're serving, and they actually cleared us on that in February of 2016, as you'll see. However, in FPM, the finding was contrary, so.
Can I just ask a quick question on this? Because I want to be clear, in supplemental education services, those are only available to students that are performing below grade level, correct?
Uh, yes.
They're all like nine years-
Students performing below grade level in PI schools.
In program improvement schools, yes. Because I, I, I don't think that that was true for the, the family that was complaining, so it's, it's kind of interesting that this all got tied together. It was not part, I mean, I don't think that was part of the, the original uniform complaint, correct?
Right, so-
And so, I just want to be clear for, for people that might be watching this, this is not something that is available to all students, it's only available to a certain category of students. Even if they're at a PI school, if you're not below grade level, you don't get compensatory supplemental education services.
Right. So, so that was last fall. In February, the, February of 2016, the CDE responded. They again asked us to address the lack of capacity at our non-PI schools, and to address our alternative governance structures. And, so I want to give you a status update of where we are at this time. As Dr. Ramirez noted in, in the earlier presentation, we went back and started really playing detective and looking for that evidence. And while, again, we were practicing in the spirit, spirit of alternative governance, we did not follow the precise plan that is laid out by the state of California. There's a very prescriptive way that that is supposed to be done, and our district didn't, I mean, just very plainly, did not follow that, that process. Did we do really what would have happened? Much of it, probably 75 to 80% of it, but we didn't follow the structure of how it's supposed to be done. And so, we have been informed by the state of California that we are expected to do that, and we will be doing that this year. They, we, in terms of notification of families for program improvement, we fall under the 2015-16 guidelines. We are not operating as most districts in the state of California, under the transition year, the 2016-17 guidelines for ESSA and notification. So, we were, were informed that we needed to follow that model, both with a LEAPI letter and specific site letters.
Wait, can I ask a question about that?
Yes.
What's the rationale behind following that model, not the 1617 model?
Because of the findings. We, we are still under NCLB.
Okay.
We are not, we have been told we're not under ESSA transition for elementary.
All right. But we are for secondary?
Uh, yes, however, because of federal program monitoring, we have made a conscious choice to try to err on the side of caution, and do everything we need to do in order to be compliant, so that we can be cleared. We actually, Mr. Matsuoka, in, I believe, his first or second week here, received a letter from the CDE, basically calling him to the State Board of Education. And that was to have been last week. We made a phone call with folks from the CDE, and at that time, they said, well, we believe you're showing good faith, you're, you're, you're going to make these improvements, so we'd like to see the work that you produce, and then we may call you in November before the State Board. So, I want you all to know kind of the, the seriousness of where the CD is, CDE is with our compliance. So, that was a very clear sign that we needed to take care of business, which is what we're The major piece here is that we will be forming alternative governance boards at our PI schools in years four and five. This is the piece that was not, that specific structure that was not utilized from 2006 on, when the plans were developed. There's a, there's a very specific way that those are supposed to be formulated. And just to briefly, and I, I will report more later on as we go, alternative governance board, their purpose is to provide oversight, to plan, to really look at the plans to improve student academic achievement. And it's important to note that their directives are specifically limited to the creation of an action plan or an SPSA, to really look at what the school says they're going to do in order to improve achievement, and, and what's really happening. So, a, a large component of these alternative governance board are classroom visits, really walking through and seeing what's going on at schools. The composition of the board, each school will have three to seven members, we're really looking at five members to be composed of, an assistant superintendent, a principal, board members are recommended to serve on these, perhaps TOSSAs, these are recommendations for who can serve. Parents should definitely be involved, and even if they're not on the board, parents and community members, these are open meetings, so they should be in attendance, and the meetings do include public comment. So, the composition will be drawn from folks that fit into that category. In terms of the meetings, each site will have three meetings per year, one in the fall, one in the winter, and one in the spring. They will also have several site visits or classroom walkthroughs, and ultimately, at the, at the end of the year, a report to the board. These meetings, again, are open to the public. The purpose is to examine data, to review the SPSAs, not to create them, but to review them once they've been developed, to give input, and again, to do the site visits, to look, again, at, to see if there are any incongruities between the SPSA and the reality of what's happening on the campus. At this point, I'm sure you do have questions or comments, so I'd love to hear those.
Ms. Parker.
Are you doing this just for the year five elementary schools?
Um, year four and five.
Year four and five.
Because year four is when the alternative governance boards are supposed to begin doing the work of giving input on the restructuring.
Okay, so, that means for our schools, only, this will not happen at McKinley, it will not happen at Santa Barbara Community Academy.
Right.
Um, Washington or Roosevelt, correct?
Or OAS.
Or OAS, yeah, I'm forgetting OAS.
So, five, five elementary schools, and we will also be using this structure at all of our secondary schools that are in PI, because they're all-
Which is all of them, right?
All of them.
Yeah.
Except for La Colina.
Except for La Colina, okay.
La Colina, La Cuesta, and Alta Vista.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Lamont.
Possibly, you, you, there will be some feedback given by the CDE or the State Board of Education in November, possibly. And do we anticipate, I mean, I hear us being very, very, very cautious and very thoughtful as we're moving forward, but even when we go through this, do we believe this process and going through this alternative governance model will lead us to where we need to be at the end of the academic year? Or do we anticipate that this is actually going to bleed in to next academic year?
My understanding is that if we complete these actions this year, that that will clear us, in, in relation to the, this uniform complaint.
And it'll clear us for, for good?
For good.
For good, okay.
Right.
Okay. How, I feel like when we, when, parents were very used to getting letters a few years ago, and I know that letters are going out right now, do we anticipate that that's going to be a different reaction than the letters that have gone out in the past? And how do we think about that reaction? Or do we actually, I mean, I feel like parents have been getting letters every year, but the timing of it and the language of it maybe has changed a little bit.
The language has changed. So, the language, and I can get the board copies of-
Just stop.
Okay.
Ms. Idelson just had it here, she got it in the mail yesterday.
So, if you were to compare the letter that you got a year ago, it actually talks about the alternative governance board, and it should have dates on there, when parents may come and be, you know, be participants in, in the process. And so, that's one piece. The, the added part is, we did build in exactly what has been going on in the schools in terms of practices to improve academic achievement, but then also talking about this alternative governance board structure.
So, we just don't know how people are gonna react?
No, and, and I'll tell you, the letters have been going out throughout the month of August and now into September, because we, we did elementary and then we did secondary. I've received three emails, which I would say is less than I had at this point last year, so.
Ms. Parker.
Um, if you're gonna have a fall meeting, this, of course, you have to get these committees essentially together pretty quick. How are you going to, how are you gonna do that in terms of getting, I mean, I think it's pretty easy to get staff, but parents in particular, how are you going to get that going?
Um, we're, we're going to have to actually put this, let me back up. When we met for charge in August, I, I want to make sure you all know that we went over this with the principals, assistant principals, all the leadership team, they needed to be aware this is coming. And so, we asked them to start thinking about who could serve, but we'll need to open it up to parents and have, you know, open it up to all parents, not, you know, handpick them, but, but see who's willing to participate, and then choose from there. But you're right, we are, we're very time restricted on this, and it actually takes a lot of, a lot of planning. I should be, well, definitely by the next board meeting, but I can put it in the Friday letter for a week from Friday, we'll have our structure together, and you'll see where we are with that. It's in progress.
Ms. Rahar.
I noticed in the written report that the PI transfers totaled about 18, and the total transfers were 55.
Right.
Uh, how did those numbers compare to previous years?
Well, and let me back up and say that that's actually, it was 18 PI transfers of low achieving students from low income families, so that, that, that really, that group we wanted to focus on. But that was for Washington, but the total number of students transferring from a PI school to Washington was 52 out of 55 transfers, are technically PI transfers, but only 18 were, were the low achieving, low income category. That is an increase of ninefold from the year before.
That's what I was wondering, is that, is that good documentation, that we did something correct?
Yes, and so, I thank you for asking that, because that's one thing that the CD will be looking for in terms of increasing the capacity. We can say that the year before, we had two transfers in that category, and, and we increased it to 18. We were not able to do that at, at Roosevelt because of lack of space availability, but we still had 14 PI transfers to Roosevelt from PI schools. So, the CDE does care about low achieving, low income students in terms of that category, but they really want to know overall, do students have the option to transfer from a PI school to a non-PI school?
I didn't hear much about- I didn't hear much about lotteries or anything like that. Did we have very many?
We had Lachalina, Washington.
Oh, I know Lachalina, that, I knew that, that was, I know.
Lachalina, Roosevelt, and, and Washington, we had lotteries for each of those schools. And we were placing students into the second week of school as we saw space, we watched the 10-day count, and we're calling folks off of, off of those waitlists up until through last week.
And how many people on the waitlist actually took advantage of the transfers?
You know, that's anecdotally, I would say, most folks did, but some said, oh no, we're going to stay put, or, you know, we would call and we'd say, okay, we have room in third grade at Roosevelt. They said, well, what about my sixth grader? Oh, we don't have room, okay, well, I want to keep my kids together. But I would say most, most folks did take advantage of the transfers when we called.
Thank you.
Any other questions? And move on to item number three, thank you.
Thank you.
Report on single plan for student achievement 2016-17.
We'll have Dr. Remmendus present on this information.
Okay, Mr. Matsuoka was, was planning on presenting this, so I will do my best to, to fill in. What you have, just as, as a background, I think would, would really be helpful, I'm sure you've reviewed it already, but it gives you a nice broad overview of where, where we are in terms of the creation of single plans. But, but essentially, what we'd like to lay out for you tonight is a roadmap for not just 2016-17, but really for a cycle that we feel will be much more conducive and better aligned to, to, just a process that's, that's a little more aligned to the kind of outcomes that we want to see. So, here in the first, in the first slide, these are really some, just basic assumptions that we make about single plans. First is that all of our schools are required to maintain, you know, a single plan. The second is that the school site council for each one of those schools should, should have an opportunity to approve that along the way and have input into the creation and progress monitoring of those plans. And as you, as you heard me indicate earlier, there are some things that we're looking to, to really make much more robust this year. In addition to that, that the governing board, all of you, each spring prior to the next school year, should have an opportunity for approval. Now, that's not historically been the case, but we're going to talk about a little bit and maybe what we can explain a little bit about why that might be a better process for us in terms of making, making decisions. The last component is that, generally speaking, the SPSAs consist of three parts, and that is a collection analyses of performance data, and that's, that's both outcome informative data, and also their priorities and plans are important for improvement. And we, we believe that moving to a cycle that is spring to spring provides us a better opportunity to do that. And finally, that monitoring results, you just heard one component of that. And although, one, one mention of, of the two prior presentations is that although they are largely compliance driven, and they may appear to be that way, there is a lot of value in having those, those procedures in place in order to really focus, and how we've been focusing on this is by strengthening and, and making the compliance really work for us in terms of making it work better for us along the lines of how we communicate and monitor student achievement. So, two SPSAs here in our district. The plans for 2016-17 were obviously not developed in the spring. We are currently on a fall-to-fall cycle. Now, in terms of why the need to move into a spring-to-spring cycle, it, it really has to do with planning and ensuring that we are leading with priorities, leading with goals, leading with data, as opposed to leading with budget creation. Budgets, as you know, are formulated, at least preliminary budgets are formulated in the spring. But we want to ensure that those budgets are fully informed by, by information about what students are, where students are at a respective campus, and that, that it's a more informed conversation with the stakeholder groups at, at the site level, so that there can be a more iterative process around how to ensure that the efforts that are articulated in the SPSAs and that are then supported by site funds or district funds, that they actually make sense for everybody. And to go back to our three, our, our building three priorities, three district priorities, the evaluation of our work and the improvement of our practices, as well as the foundation around equity and, and and cultural proficiency are really laid out in this, no different than in the LCAP. So, so one, one important thing to, to note is that although we are looking to move into that cycle for the purpose of ensuring that we clear those findings, we will need to continue, at least for, for this fall, on ensuring that those SPSAs for this year are approved in November. With, with the thought in mind of moving to, to a different cycle in, in, in the spring. So in terms of, in terms of alignment, we want to make sure, Dr. Dry mentioned earlier, ensuring that we have alignment between our LCAP, between our LCAP and single plans, it's going to be an important piece. So we want to make sure that, again, these, these priorities that, that are emerging as district priorities are really got our work and allow us to, to really be in a more reflective and, and nimble state to be able to make those adjustments along the way. So that work will, will begin, and we will have a first pass at being able to align those here in the fall with an eye also on building toward the spring. So what you're going to see in our SPSAs here in the fall will be, we'd like for you to consider that, that opportunity to see it fully formed now in the spring. So there shouldn't be a great deal of incoherence. But it'll be essentially our, our first solid draft of that as we, as we look into, into the spring. So we are already, we have already undertaken and will continue to undertake a, a process of realigning our SPSAs with those district priorities. And at some point in time, not now, I want to reiterate the not now piece, that we look to, to ensure that those district priorities are also evident in, in the formation of the LCAP and how it, how it lays out not just functionally, but also in, in terms of the actions that we, that we indicate are, are important to our, to our work. So just to, to conclude, our, our most immediate task is to ensure that we work to organize the SPSAs and work with our site leadership to ensure that we're on a path for approval in, in November, in November of this year. From the district office perspective, we will continue to provide technical assistance and support, and some of this has already been undertaken, we've already had a, a good opportunity to meet with our principals. Both Dr. Dry and I have had an opportunity, and as well as a few other key members of district staff have had an opportunity to really lay out a vision for that, not just for this fall, but into the spring. So principals are already operating under that mindset. We, we just ask that we, we all have a collective understanding that this will be a work in progress as we, as we really try to strengthen that cycle to be more productive, and what we hope is more productive, and, and that we, we're really looking as, again, as a two-step process. In this fall, we will build a, begin to build a version aligned to our district priorities, incorporating recent data, some of which we'll share in a few minutes, and with an eye also on spring as, as an opportunity to engage in that evaluation cycle and also now update for not, not looking back, but rather looking forward in June of 2017 for 17, 18 school year, which we feel will be a much improved cycle. So with that, I'd like to turn it over for any questions.
One question, Ms. Parker.
I think the boards tend to approve the single plan in the fall just because they've been waiting for student data. And so, you know, I, it keeps coming earlier with the new testing, and so I'm hopeful that, I mean, obviously, what you're talking about though now is essentially always developing the single plan based on the previous year's data rather than current data. Although the reality is that principals, you know, they've started the school year, and they've already based it on the previous year's data, even though, you know, the board is seeing current year data usually. And so I, I appreciate that essentially it will all tie together more coherently, and that makes sense to me. Just in terms of the format, it's been so interesting over the past 10 years to see how things have changed. And when it first came on the board, we'd have a 20-minute study session per school, but we, we sat down with every school. And so those are the several days of special meetings, and then, of course, we got this, the shortened five-minute version. I, I think you get so much more out of a discussion that's at least 15 minutes long. I'm, I'm curious to hear what other board members think of the idea of actually not being in on the conversation for every school, just hearing a piece of it. But you, I do think that you'll get a lot more out of it. It's just the, just not being able to touch base with every principal in the single plan process. But of course, we would have the opportunity to read all the single plans and to raise questions about them. So, I'm, I'm, I'm interested, I'm assuming that this is a process that Mr. Matsuoka has either used before or is something that you came together with as a cabinet as what might be more appropriate, and so I'm certainly willing to try it.
Sure, we appreciate that, and it's, it's a bit of both, it's a, it's a format that he found familiar and one that we also, you know, had, had some, some measure of input. I, I think what, what will, what will change, or will hopefully be a little bit more, is that with the cycle, I think when we talk about data, we tend to talk about some of the data that just comes on a one-year cycle. We are really trying to incorporate into our, our, our culture an idea of how to shrink that to make it more formative. How do we use data that doesn't come once a year, but rather in steady intervals internally that we control, that we have a great measure of control over in order to build out plans? And part of the cycle also may, may, may involve into an evaluation piece that accompanies this, where you would have more robust information, and it's not to take away from the face-to-face contact, but rather to be able to, to give you insight a little more profoundly into the kind of thinking that went into, went into those programming, because I, I do recall last year, that was a way of feedback, is how do we know what worked prior as we build out the next year's plan? And I think this cycle will, will actually allow us to be able to loop back once that formative data, once that some of the data does come in, and to be able to evaluate our work on a more ongoing basis so that there is a, a clear alignment from one year to the next or following.
Going off on that one, that, that point, I think you, you bring up a good point, which is, it, it occurred to me when you were going through the presentation that one of the things that's been challenging for me to look at schools across the district is to compare their data. Because the single plans up to this point in time, at least in my experience of four years of being on the board, everyone chooses to look at certain things differently. And so you have no ability to really look at why Roosevelt, for example, chose to look at one particular piece and not something else, because the data's not consistent. And of course, at the end of the day, they're going to, you're going to choose as an administrator what to focus on because you're at a particular school. But it makes it awfully hard for, as a board member, to look at that, so I think your suggestion of maybe looking at, maybe having a study session where you dive deeper into the data and look at it more broadly across the district is, is a great idea so that you can place it within the, the context when you look at the single plans individually within that broader context. And I think that's, that's the challenge, that's really the hard part. I think even taking into account what changes occurred over time like this, but it's equally challenging to look at it broadly. And when you look at, for example, our secondary schools and you look at the high schools, sometimes we've been presented data, and I'm sitting there still looking, like, why did that occur at San Marcos and it didn't occur at DP, or why is that occurring at DP and it's not really occurring at San Marcos? It's a little easier in the secondary in that respect because we have three, three, four high schools, but it's still challenging when you look at it from an elementary perspective, because elementary is, we, we have a lot more schools.
Sure.
But also because I think there's, there's, I'd say there's more nuances in elementary, at least in my perspective in, in terms of looking at why certain things happen, and we are looking at more grades. And, and so I think being able to dive deeper i- is a really important thing, at least for, for future board. I mean, we're going to have some discussion in November, but, but even beyond that, a future board would probably welcome that and, and find some appreciation on looking at that. And then it brings back the point of, of, of looking at that template and figuring out what makes sense in that template. Because I think there have been times, at least speaking for myself, that I've been frustrated with the template, and I, and I approached the single plans with wanting to ask the same question to all of the administrators, because I want to find some consistency across that. Because as a board member, we have to look at all of our schools in that broader perspective, not just as a single school, even though the plan is about a single school.
Right.
So, that's a little bit of my feedback, Ms. Limon.
So I guess my feedback differs, because we've done so many different models for these single plans. Remember when we had them all come and we had like a lot of long meetings? So, it's been interesting, and I feel like one of the things that I've liked about seeing all the schools was kind of the clustering of how it happened in, like, in the last two or three years, whenever we started doing that. And the clustering of, when I had Franklin, Santa Barbara Junior High, and Santa Barbara High School in the same group, we were talking in, not just site-specific, but kind of pathway-specific, and that I really liked. And so, there was something I got out of that, and I know that pretty much in every single one of the models that we did, I would take back pieces because I could never, there was just more I needed to, to ask about. So those, those would be questions that I would ask the superintendent or I'd follow up. Ms. Chatey was always in my group, and so financial questions would come up. And I think I liked the comparison because it was useful to me as a board member to hear from all of the schools, particularly the clusters. I mean, and they were clustered in other ways, as we probably all know. So I like that. I feel like if I were a board member, I wouldn't want, if we're just looking and delving into with a lot of detail, three to five schools, there's 22, that leaves a lot that you're not going to hear from. If I knew that there was some kind of cycle where we heard from some year one, and then the following year was a different group, I think I could live with it in a different way than saying, oh my gosh, like, you may actually be on the board for four years and never hear from all of the schools. And that feels very different to me than having a three-year plan or a two-year plan where you're saying, look, every two, you, you'll see, you know, Cleveland this year, but you won't see them again for another year or for another two years. Like, knowing that you'll eventually get to kind of dig deep into all of them, I think was helpful. I don't know that there's an ideal model, though, but I did like the clustering. I liked knowing that I would have the opportunity to talk and compare. I think the, the actual single-site plans, like the format, we've always talked about the format. I mean, I really just look for the parts that they change, not the parts that are identical, anyway. So.
Sure, we appreciate the feedback, and we'll, we'll note that as well.
Yeah, I've only been here with the round robin experience, where we moved with all the schools represented. And I really looked forward to it because I got to sit, and I think it was valuable for the different school principals to hear each other's models too, and what their feedback was. So, if I were only getting a subset of that each year, I don't know if I, it, it wouldn't be that same experience. Now, to. Now, to say that that wouldn't be all right, I don't know because I only had the whole room full of everybody. It has been very quick to just get five minutes with each one and-
With Mr. Charina and his dang shaky bell.
But, there's been a real positive excitement to it and a sense of community to have everybody in one room with the board members and the cabinet, you know, overseeing it. And like I say, it's been a real positive moment in being a board member to get that feedback all in one hour or whatever we had. But, that's not to say a different format would not be helpful too. I think it would probably give more depth. It always felt like so quick to get much impression, you know, in that period of time. But, that would be my sense is, I've enjoyed it, but maybe something else would work.
Thank you for the feedback.
I think one of the other things that came to mind as I heard my fellow board members speaking, the cluster piece, I do like the idea that you have clusters of elementary, junior high, and high school and then you get to hear them. One of the things that I remember bringing up last year in terms of that is that I asked the question of how often people actually have conversations between elementary and junior. Sometimes it happens and sometimes it doesn't. Some administrators, I know that, for example, Santa Barbara High School, Santa Barbara Junior High and Franklin will have conversations or they have conversations on more of a regular basis. I'm not sure if all of our administrators do that in that regard, you know, if they engage in that. And so, I think the cluster part for that reason alone is kind of an interesting thing in and of itself for the board to kind of hear whether that is occurring or not, but also maybe perhaps as an impetus for those administrators to maybe perhaps get together a little more often, have those kind of conversations. Because ultimately, as some administrators quickly acknowledge, your kids are going to be my kids next year and they're going to be your kids the following year or the two years after that, you know? So, I think that's a really important point not to forget in this process because I think that grouping in and of itself is really rich and can be, lead to rich conversations. But it also brings up the point that I was trying to make earlier, which is that broader perspective, that broader context that I think both as a board and as a district and administrators, we all benefit from and we get something out of it. And that's the problem with the single plans, that sometimes they're sort of written in the context of looking at a particular school without thinking that somehow or another it's going to lead to something else, which is going to lead to something else, or that we as a district can't approach certain things in a certain way. And that's the dilemma, like, for me, for me.
And I think to begin to address that, that was the idea of wrapping around priorities and looking at that being kind of a common thread.
Yeah.
And it's beyond the formatting, but it really is in the things that we choose to focus on and ultimately align resources to.
Yeah.
And I think that's the work that has been undertaken over the last few years in particular relative to the LCAB. Hopefully, you'll see much more alignment happening between the LCAB and those single plans, which I think would help your vantage point as a board member, be able to understand and be able to toggle from the very site-specific all the way up to your role as a steward of the entire organization and the community. So, that's, the challenge with that is how do you work through that while still recognizing that there has to be some degree of autonomy-
Sure.
-and flexibility at the site level to make some authentic decision-making.
Completely. But I think we, I'm trying to say that we should acknowledge that none of the schools live in a vacuum.
Sure.
And that they're tied to each other in many ways.
Sure.
You know, even the uniform complaint process, we're looking at that. Someone's sort of bad experience turns out to be, you know, a positive experience for that same family because they moved to another place or can be, perceived as such.
Sure.
So, I think that's what I'm saying, that there's still a need to tie in some of the pieces together and not leave them just solely in a vacuum.
Sure, thank you.
Ms. Parker?
Just to finish up on this, we're a medium-sized district and I think it's important to note that we're right at that cusp where many districts our size and then larger don't have the study sessions around the single plan at all. And it is strictly, it comes to us essentially, or comes to them along the lines of, you know, safety plans where it just comes en masse and you raise questions, principals might be in the room, but it's been almost, I mean, I guess I question whether there's value to the way we do it at all. And so, I appreciate that we are doing it in some format or another so that we can talk about it in more detail, but a lot of boards for districts our size and larger just don't.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Just one comment.
I would hope that the three or four that we hear from is done almost like on a lottery basis and not just pick the stars to come and wow us, you know, choose their names the night before our meeting and let them come and present their plans.
Sure, we'll make sure that the feedback that you've provided us, that we're able to, we'll get into something that is accurately reflected in the board, in the study session as we plan for that.
Perfect. Any other questions, the board? If not, we'll move to item number four, discussion of future board of education meeting dates through the 2017-18 school year. Dr. Dari.
Yes, Mr. Matsuoka wanted to bring before you some recommended changes to future board meetings for the 2017-2018 school year. And the background is for, and the rationale is for various reasons, us being more efficient as a system and also to give you all some break due during the summertime and all that. So, this is what's being proposed and so I'll, and I'll ask for your recommendation after you discuss it. Well, actually, we'll bring it back in the next board meeting.
Ms. Sima.
So, I don't see a whole lot of change from our practice except for the month of August. I do want to note that for 2017, one of the challenges that we've had is since our district decided to take, to, since our district decided to give our students the entire week off as opposed to just two days or three days off for Thanksgiving, I was going to say Valentine's, so off, for Thanksgiving, we, I feel like since that happened, we've only had one meeting in November, not two because of the notice time and the prep time for that. I think that if, so, I think August is the biggest difference and I don't know if November would work given the week off, but it could possibly work. I see Ms. Parker is looking it up right now.
The reason why, it's because the 23rd is, it's the fourth Thursday and there's a 30th in that, in November 2017. So, that Tuesday, the 28th is the week after Thanksgiving break in 2017.
But if no one's working-
So, we wouldn't meet the week of 20, that, everybody's working that week because everybody's off the 20th through the 24th.
The week before.
Right, but then wouldn't someone have to give notice on the 24th to meet our 72-hour notice for a Tuesday meeting? And if no one's working that entire week-
Correct.
-agenda items won't get on?
Well, I mean, theoretically, we could have an agenda that gets created the week before that that goes early instead.
That could happen.
Yeah.
And then, the other thing that happens-
Ms. Sima.
Sorry. Is the CSBA meeting that 2017, looks like it starts November 30th to December 2nd.
Really? Wow.
Would you repeat that?
Yeah, it said for the California School Board Association Conference in 2017, it's November 30th to December 2nd.
Yeah, I see that. Wow.
So, the one thing that I wanted to say is that I don't see a whole lot of difference between, except for August and November and probably we, there needs to be looking at that a little bit more carefully. The other pieces that, and perhaps it's not so much a function of the days that we decide to meet, but there are some items on our board agenda that have been on there for a couple of years and we've never gotten to them. So, I worry about decreasing the number of meetings when we still have items that we haven't gotten to. I think it's rare to have a couple of items that are there for a couple of years, but I think it's more common for items to be there several months. And I just, I throw that out there because if having an extra meeting will ensure that a board is able to get to all of the agenda items they've requested, I would make that a priority, but if, you know, I want to be careful. I want to be careful that we don't then find ourselves saying, we don't have enough time, we have to keep our meeting short, and then in return, you have items that we never get to as a board or that take, I think, longer than they should to get on an agenda. So, I toss that out there.
Ms. Seidelson.
Takes off one meeting over the whole scheme of what we're currently doing, I think, doesn't it? Just that change in August. Because we weren't having two in November, so this adds one to November and then August-
Takes off one in August.
It removed one.
But it's technically, I don't know if the November one could really happen.
Yeah.
Okay, in the future, I see.
Yeah.
Well, I guess the question mark for me is that we may, for 2017 and for November in particular, and it looks like it, I don't know if it plays out in, no, it would just be this for 2017, we might need to have a meeting on a Wednesday night instead of a Tuesday night. So, it would be the, maybe the 29th instead of the 28th, so something to think about so that we can do the noticing appropriately. But then, in 2018, it will go back to where we would, we would only be able to have the one meeting unless we had a special meeting earlier in the month in November. So, something to think about.
Yeah. And I think in his, in his background, he suggested that if there's need to have extra meetings there, you would, you have the option to do that as well.
I would like to comment on that. It's in there twice that says that. I'm a believer in consistency and knowing the dates in advance, well in advance, planning with the assumption that, okay, we can have a meeting when called. And that, that's hard to get five of us in the same room at the same time, many, in many cases. I wouldn't want to depend on that very often. And I guess my other comment is, historically, this discussion takes place on the first meeting in December with the new board. And when you have three to four new board members, their calendars are important too. I'm not quite sure why we need to approve this or if we did approve it, subject to that being reaffirmed by the new board at the December meeting. I don't want to take the prerogative to make decisions based upon our calendars and not their calendars.
And I would, I would agree with Mr. Herron. I think one of the things that is really important is regularly scheduled board meetings be noticed way ahead for the board in terms of planning for, you know, your own vacations, your own personal needs, your busy schedule, whatever it may be. But the other part too is that, that has to be considered is that these are the regularly scheduled board meetings. We're not even talking about the other board meetings that we have with Cooper Unified, Santa Barbara City College, Culito City, Santa Barbara City, and the occasional special board meeting that we may have to have that we've had in the past for a variety of different reasons. So, I think if we were to, as I agree with Mr. Herron in terms of at this point in time, I think it's a little premature for us as a board to do this. I think you can take our comments and suggestions, but I think ultimately, the next board that's seated should make that decision.
Okay.
But also consider all the other pieces that we talked about tonight, especially the other board meetings that we don't necessarily have on the agenda right now at this point in time and have to be scheduled. So, that's something to think about.
Okay.
Board, any other comments, questions?
I guess I'll also just mention that these are, you know, the discussion around board meetings in particular is Board Bylaw 9320. And so, I don't see anything in this except for the August piece that if we were going to do that regularly, it would need to actually change wording in Board Bylaw 9320.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
We'll take all of these back to our tactical and consider your input then.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That moves us to item number five, student performance in English Language Arts, Literacy and Mathematics, Two-Year Summary of California Assessment of Standard Performance and Progress.
Great. And now that two years of student performance results on the California Assessment of Student Performance and Progress are available, California school districts are able to look at growth over time in student performance in English Language Arts and Mathematics. This report highlights student performance results of five major groups within the Santa Barbara Unified School District, which will be district-wide performance, school performance, district-wide performance of racial, ethnic student subgroups, district-wide performance on English Language Arts, English Language proficiency subgroups, and lastly, district-wide performance on socioeconomic subgroups. So, Dr. Ramirez and I will discuss these items and I will also invite Dr. Gremo Wann to address any technical information she may have around, around the process of how she gathered information. But, Dr. Ramirez will focus around the areas of elementary and I'll focus in the secondary areas. Okay. So, what you see before here, an initial slide here is essentially two years' worth of performance on standards, students who either met the standards or exceeded the standards and also in relation, relative to the state average. And you can essentially see there in English Language Arts overall as a district, there's a moderate, moderate growth from one year to the next. Question?
Just first question.
Yes.
The statewide average is actually only, I feel like, really helpful if the statewide demographics match roughly our districts. And so, I guess my question is, are we about the same if we look at the broad California numbers or are we pretty different?
That was not a factor when our team was deciding whether or not to include that on the slide, so I will need, I can look it up.
Great.
Get back to you by the end of the presentation.
Great, thank you.
Yeah. Just for, for the public out there, when we're talking about all students, the state assessment results are a result of the smarter balanced assessments for that third graders through eighth graders take and in the high school, that 11th graders take. So, I wanted to make sure that that's clear. Here, we have the results by grade level and Dr. Ramirez can mention some things about elementary and I'll go to the secondary.
Sure. So, we see here a pattern of some growth. Now, what's difficult with this is that what you see here are not cohort to cohort. So, it's just important to keep that in mind. So, for example, the 13-15 third grade would be a different group of students than 15-16. And I think that's important to note. So, if you want a more, if you want to look cohort by cohort, you'd be looking at 14-15 third grade to 15-16 fourth grade, in which case there, you would see some incremental growth there, one year to the next. And so, that's the pattern that we are looking forward to being able to play out with this type of assessment now. So, can I open it up to any kind of questions or observations you may have?
Well, I'll just note that on the CD, the testing website, now you can see that as a growth over time, which is a great new tool.
Yes.
And so, essentially, if I look at this in the way where I'm staggering the dark blue for one year with the light blue from the next year, then you actually see more growth than you, than if you just look at straight on. So, I think, I hope for members of the public that are really interested that they'll go and take a look at that growth over time tab.
Sure. We'll go to the next one. If there's any more questions.
I just have, I thought that the 2014-15 was not, it was a field test, right? Or am I off? When did you-
Yeah, 2014-15 was the first baseline data.
So, that was the beginning of the true test?
Yes.
So, the prior year was-
The field test was in 2014.
Okay. These years have gone fast. These years have gone past.
I know.
Okay. Here, what you see is the results for mathematics of students who exceeded or met the standards district-wide, and the dotted line you see the cross are basically where the state, the state average is. Here, we have it broken down by grade level. As you can see, overall, across our district, and possibly even in the state, you'll see that a lot of stu, more students perform better with English Language Arts than in math, and this is certainly representative in our data here.
Third grade, big increase. What happened? I mean, it's a good thing.
It's, it's.
Different students? Is that?
It is a different cohort of students, but in fairness, and that's, that's a very complicated question. But, one of the things that we, that I invite you to consider, is that especially in the elementary grades, we are seeing essentially a demarcation, potentially, between students who began with us in, let's just say, kindergarten, under one set of standards, and then came into a different set of standards. And it's not just standards, it really is expectations, which then drive classroom and pedagogical shifts, not only as a school in the district, but also at the, at the level of, of the student. So, it's difficult to, to be able to say with certainty, and this is, this data wouldn't necessarily be helpful for that. We would have to cross-reference it with other data sets. But we, we're very proud, obviously, and we would like to see that trend continue and hold. But that's, that's one way where, for example, the Common Core standards really were adopted in 2010. So, if you just backward map the, the entry point for these kids, you would go back four to five years, depending on whether they came in, at what point in time they came into our system, but you would, you would see some correlation between the two.
And, and I hope that that is true, in, in looking at that grade three data, because obviously, with the old standard, sometimes we would see certain years where there'd be a spike up, and it's hard to tell if there was a pattern, and it is just too soon. But, it's also alarming, in the sense that if that is what's going on, then if you look at what happens at, at the kids that didn't come in, you know, that started on the California standards, and then the transition to the Common Core, and to see these actually quite large drops in understanding of Common Core mathematics, I mean, I think that really speaks to addressing some fundamental gaps with those students that got caught in the middle. And so, that, that's worrisome.
I'll just add something to, to this, these results, because since, since it's broken by grade level, I think we want to make sure we, I want to make sure that we understand that the, the expectation on the students in math are completely different from what it used to be with CST. In the past, in this, in the, in the secondary schools, starting from seventh grade, the state assessed each student with what course they took. For example, if you were in, in seventh grade, if you were in pre-algebra, there was a pre-algebra assessment. If you were in, if you were in geometry in seventh grade, you were assessed with a geometry test. In a sense, the proficiency would have been based on the different levels of courses. So, you can essentially say, students are proficient, but you wouldn't necessarily know what course, what course is in. This is different in the sense that there's one test in seventh grade, there's one test in eighth grade, and one test in ninth grade, no, I'm sorry, one test, and then one test in the 11th grade. The 11th grade assessment is based on Math one concepts, what used to be Algebra one, geometry, and then Algebra two. Meaning, in order for those numbers to increase, you first have to make sure that our students have access to that, to that curriculum. So, that's, so those are some of the challenges that we have here. The results of, the results you've seen in secondary schools will, are, are a result of whether students have access, number one, and secondly, even if they have the access, are they ready to actually learn from the curriculum based on where they're coming Right now, we'll transition to the school performance, and first, we have is just the elementary schools, and I'll have Dr. Ramirez talk a little bit about that.
All right. So, we have, just as a, as a general pattern, we have about six of our schools that showed some incremental growth, with a couple of our schools showing, showing significant growth in ELA, most notably Adams and Franklin. Very, very moderate accomplishments, and certainly, and OAS as well, although it's a much smaller population relative to the other two. But, certainly very, very happy that that's, that that's a trend, that we're looking to then backward design, how, how those particular sites got to those, to those levels, in order to really mirror those at other sites and have, have those learnings take place.
Was it the iPads?
I would love to tell you yes, and be wholehearted about that. We, we don't know. There are, as with anything else, there is just such a combination of practices and areas of focus that I think would then be mirrored here and reflected. But there, there would be a myriad of things that we would, we would look to, as well as the fact that, you know, those are, those are two, in terms of leadership at the elementary, two leaders that have been there for, for quite some time. And I don't think that that's a point that can be understated, consistency. To come back to your point, Mr. Herron, consistency does matter in that regard, and we want to make sure that we're working collaboratively to ensure that, as leadership, that we're supporting one another, and being able to glean those important leadership practices as well, because they, they have a way of filtering out. So, I could spend quite some time talking about what I would hypothesize goes into this, but needless to say, there is remarkable growth, if you just take it for what it is, just in comparison, comparison one year to the next.
With the junior high schools, what you'll see there in English Language Arts is essentially a uniform growth amongst the junior high schools, with La Colina having the, the highest results overall, last year and this year. Any questions around that? And on to the high schools, as you can see there, there is, Dustbubba's actually having the, Dustbubba's having the highest marks amongst all the different schools, with slight growth from last year to this year. And you see the results from the other two comprehensive high schools, St. Marcos dropping between the two cohorts, and so, so does Center Barbara High. But overall, just a moderate, moderate growth. Here, we have the same results for math and similar, the same results in math for, for elementaries.
And we see very similar patterns in, in many regards to what you see in, in ELA. So, to come back to your question, and I may have answered it facetiously, Mr. Herron, but in truth, what we're starting to see is that there are some, some significant pedagogical shifts happening in those, in those, in those classrooms, and they're very related to things that have been developing over the last few years. And I come up with the question of consistency, because you would want to see things build year over year. And, and so, from that regard, consistency at all levels, classroom, leadership, throughout, really does make a difference, because you want to see those growth, that growth be generated over time. But it can only happen if we're very, very precise in how our practices develop, and how we evaluate those practices to ensure that we're really focusing on the right things. So, it's not surprising in the sense, because we are working a whole lot more collaboratively. We are working, and I think the, the kind of opportunities that have, that have presented themselves due to the technology also have to be mentioned, because that has, in many ways, of my interactions with political sites, fundamentally changed the way in which students learn, and the way teachers approach learning. So, I think in that, in that regard, it's very encouraging, and, and there is some evidence that would suggest that, that it has a great deal to do with the access to devices and technology.
And on to, to the results for junior high school, as you can see there, this is pretty much consistent to what you saw in the English Language Arts, and just moderate growth across the junior highs. Any questions regarding, regarding that? High schools, similarly, remember, just to remind you that this is the 11th grade assessment, and there is no assessment in ninth and 10th grade, although it's best practice for school districts or sites to implement what the smarter balances offers, which is the interim assessments. So, those are things that we're looking into, because we feel that we need to be able to check for progress along the way, and not just wait until, until 11th grade to see how students are doing. The next set of data are the subgroup performance district-wide.
And I'll go ahead and start there. This is, the next few slides are probably the most telling, as we really talk about how we frame our work. So, when we talk about an achievement, an achievement gap, it's most reflected here, in terms of the disproportionality. So, here, it's important to keep in mind, again, that these are aggregates, and three through eight, and 11, so it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't draw out by grade level per se, but it's important to note that, that even, even by comparison to state averages, our African-American, and particularly our Hispanic population, which is the largest, are not, not meeting the mark. And that that performance is, has been pretty consistent from, from last year's performance. And that really goes to ELA and math. And I believe it's, it's something to be noted, that again, one of the shifts amongst many, that comes into math, is the, the immediate, impressive need for literacy, that has now really, is going to be very reflected in math, in ways that CST was never able to capture. CST had its merits, but, but that, that, that assessment type, and that assessment format lent itself to focusing much more on the computational procedural components of math, whereas now, as, as, as that rigor and critical thought has come in, it has elevated the importance and the need. It was always important, but is now, it's brought it even more so to the forefront. So, the, the performance of, of our minority groups in particular are, are really the areas where we can't help but just draw our attention.
I just want to add to what Dr. Ramirez said. I hope what you'll see as we move forward, as we focus on district priorities, all that is, is an investment in teacher instructional practices. So, it's very, so when you look at how we have identified, how we want to spend the, the seven million that Mr. Jete identified earlier, in terms of professional learning, instructional materials we want to purchase, we want to make sure that there is a focus on the teacher's first instruction strategies that they're actually able to use. And we don't want to depend on programs that we can buy to deal with literacy, but to really empower our teachers to be able to incorporate that in their first instruction. So, that's the area you'll continue to hear from us over and over. So, our, the services that we will render throughout their years, we will bring towards you, will, will be aligned to that.
A question, just on technology. These tests are all taken on computers, right?
Correct.
And are they taken on iPads, Chromebooks, PCs?
Both. Well, Chromebooks and iPads for our district are the most common, and they're accessible in both platforms.
Do we have any understanding as to the ability to use the technology in these different subgroups? Is there Asian and white more, have more ability on computer, because they maybe use them more every day versus other groups, you know?
Something that, something that Mr. Rickman has mentioned before is the technology divide, which now is really, it's, 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 it's not a luxury, it's really a necessity. And the proliferation of technology in some homes versus others is something that can't be understated in this community.
I just wanted to give you the type, the ability to use the machine.
Absolutely.
I'm sitting there taking a test, I, I don't even know where the A is.
Absolutely. Exposure to technology, familiarity, all comes into this. There is almost an embedded and implicit assumption that there is a certain degree of technological savvy, proficiency, and aptitude, that, that may be playing into this. There's no, there's no way of teasing that out, per se, because there aren't the alternative print versions that there were. In previous times, that would have, that would have not been a factor at all, because it was all print-based. Now that they're computer adaptive, the two are so enmeshed that it would be difficult to tease that out. But anecdotally, we know that a student that, that, or a child that comes into a home with technology and devices readily accessible, and almost from birth on, has opportunities to engage that way, would, needless to say, have a leg up on a child that accesses that, let's say primarily at school, and even at school, in certain intervals of time, and not on a regular, consistent basis. Those are all fair points, that it would be very difficult to be able to tease out from this kind of data, but that we know, anecdotally, makes a difference.
A couple of years ago, at one of the parent forums, the question was asked, do you teach keyboarding? And the answer was explicitly, no, we don't. After what you just said, and what now seems to be apparent, is keyboarding something that some kids should have?
Yes, but it, but it goes beyond keyboarding. It goes into just the familiarity with how to access information, and how to be able to interplay with information as you create and construct new learning. So, on a, on a, on a very basic level, yes, it may have to do with just keyboarding skills. But, but on a more day-to-day, realistic opportunities for kids to engage with that, that platform and that opportunity on a consistent basis, there's no way of saying, but we know, or we feel confident, as a staff, that, that that makes a difference.
You know, it's, this data is, it makes me cringe. It does. We've had technology in place for some time, and, you know, earlier, other slides were given where we talked about the role of the principal in being a kind of tenured senior leadership. I can compare schools and give same demographics, but I don't see the same results. And so, I think that one of the things, in light of the fact that we had a conversation about technology, like, a couple hours ago, that is difficult, is that these are expensive anecdotes. And it's hard, it is hard to figure out where we invest our money. And over six years, so often, you know, we're told, this is it, this is, this is, this is where we, we need to be investing money, and I think it's particularly difficult to know. I see, we expected the data, I mean, to be not where we wanted it to be. I didn't expect it to be, I didn't think that our Black and Latino students were going to be lower than the state average rate. That's, I think, even more of a shock to me.
Actually, can I clarify on that? Because I think that's the general state average, right? This is not the state average for subgroups.
Yes.
That is, that is correct, Ms. Parker. And so, also, to follow up on your previous question, as to what the state student population looks like, we are pretty close with our Latino students to the state. State is 54, we're 59. White, state is 24%, we're 34, so we're a bit more. English learners, we're, we're within three percentage points, state is 22, we're 25. three percentage points, state is twenty-two, we're twenty-five. Reclassified students statewide is eleven percent, we're twenty-two percent. Free reduced lunch statewide fifty-nine, our district forty-three. So I would say there's some variation depending on it, but I would say by and large, it's fairly, I mean, I would say it's close enough to say that that is an okay point for us to, to try to locate and understand what our scores, where we are district-wide in relation to something external.
Although I do think for like the slides fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, that it'd be helpful to have the state average for that demographic, so that we could see where, where we were compared to the state average for that particular subgroup.
I, I would be happy to, that's an easy thing for me to, yeah.
You're, you're doing great.
That's an easy thing for me to add. I think our concern within our team was trying to figure out, do we put all of that on there? Then it gets really cluttered. But if that's something the board is interested in, that's, that's a very fast addition that I could
I think, at least, I would be interested in, but I also want to be careful that that's not like our high expectation, that we expect more, that we don't pat ourselves in the back for being higher in the low group. And so that, that's, you know, my only concern, and I think this is all interrelated. I, I know, you know, I'm, I'm very curious what's working at the schools. Like, we're talking about this formula, I don't get the formula, I don't know it, you're all experts, I'm looking to you to help me understand the formula. But it's very clear that I, I don't know. I mean, I know there's some schools where we've piloted the tech, like, technology, and they have similar demographics, and they're not, they're not there yet. And so I think that that is a piece that confuses me, that would be, and to the extent that we do understand it, because I don't know that we all have, well, twenty percent of this is this, and twenty-three percent of that is that, that, that we have more information, I think, to think about these things holistically, because I feel several items on the agenda today have been interrelated.
Yes.
And they're not standalone, but they play into how we think and how we vote, so.
This, this next slide is probably maybe the most telling, in terms of, in terms of how, how we can really consider and conceptualize our work and our priorities, how we really need to drive this. What you see here, I'd like to clarify, having had an opportunity a couple of years ago to really work firsthand with the reclassification criteria. I told you then that it would take a couple of years to kind of look at and see and take, take effect, but let me tell you, let me show you, show with you one, one component of this, because something that is in here that, that I think is worth, is worth noting, is that the reclassified, the reclassified performance, the student, the, the performance of students who've been reclassified has, is, is much closer to students who are English only. And part of the numbers that you see here in the reclassified are also students that maybe in years past wouldn't have appeared in this group, which would probably have given us a false or an incomplete perception of where we really are in our English learner group. So part of the reason that you see a stark difference is because those group, those, those kids have moved and migrated from one classification to the other, signaling that we're, we're on, on the right path in moving them, and ensuring that they were reclassified, thereby ensuring access to more rigorous courses, and particularly at the secondary, ensuring that they weren't saddled with an additional language development course that they didn't in truth need. So that's one component of that. The other piece to this is that it does signal that we still have a great deal of work to do to ensure that our students who are EL, and embedded in this would be our long-term ELs, who show up at the seventh, eighth, sixth, seventh, eighth, and eleventh grade, around supporting them. And the support of how to work through this has already been really undertaken. In the spring, you may recall that we, that we talked about a literacy and language acquisition plan, and we're on. Well, we've, we've undertaken that, particularly because we know that there is a need for us all as professionals and practitioners to really carve out a space for us to fully and better understand the needs of, the linguistic needs of our EL students. And this is not a small number. We're looking at thirteen ninety-six that were assessed in ELA, and pretty close to the same number in math. So this is a significant population of, in, in our district. To come back to Ms. Parker's point, it's particularly concentrated in our elementaries, because our feeder, our, our partner, parents do tend to change our demographics a bit once we get into the junior highs. But this really is the imperative, and there isn't, or I don't think any of us can approach you with the silver bullet. It doesn't exist. It, maybe we just need to say that out loud. It doesn't exist. It's a number of practices, cultural shifts, and real hard look at our practices that are yielding these results, and they spread into every single aspect and component of what we do, day-to-day, year-to-year, from the brand engagement, to the kind of classroom-based pedagogy that we engage in, to the kind of formative data that we use, in order to not let this wait another year before we can tell you whether we're making growth or not. So it really does trickle into everything that we do, and we've put a lot of things in place to begin to really address this, or to, to further the, the work around ELs, but also ensuring that our reclassified students, who, by the way, still require a certain measure of linguistic support, continue to receive it. And, and what we've put in place, I guess the, what is different as in the past, is that we're trying to bring it to scale. And that means across every elementary, junior high, and high school. And that is an ambitious goal, but it's something that we're really trying to, trying to move forward with. And that's why you saw kind of a five-year plan, because it is so robust. But this is really where the work, where so much of our work really lies, in, in our support of ELs as people, as kids, as human beings. And that extends out to how do we engage and partner with families, parents, and families.
Any other questions regarding this? So the last slide focuses on the socioeconomic status of our students, and what you see here is similar gap, gaps in achievement, which you just saw previously. So like I said, a lot of the same, many of the same concerns and strategies that we hope to implement will impact these groups as well. One thing I do want to, I, I'll keep going back to the piece that, of, of pedagogy that we can focus in on, but I, I believe the first thing we have to always, always look, act first is whether kids even have a chance at all by having access, whether they be in the course or, or with the standards. So if you, if we don't address that, no pedagogy that we're going to bring into the system is going to change, change that. So that is an area we have the ability to look at the data now, to see of those students who took the test, we can actually, we have the ability to profile whether they actually were in classes that would yield them to be, would allow them to be successful. And it's a, and it can't be just a one-grade level issue, it's a K-12 issue. And, and we need to be very coherent in our work, and it should tie into a lot of the work we discuss around the SPSAs. Hopefully, what you'll see in, in future SPSA meetings or, or metrics that are not summative but formative that would, are aligned to this, and we have the ability to be able to do that. So it's just a matter of buckling down and saying, we, we need to have an aligned process to really review, look at this work collectively, and, and evaluate the work along the way. Any other questions with that?
Thank you.
Yep.
We are actually getting table item number six for the next board meeting, so that brings us to the end of our agenda. We do have some coming events. I mentioned before, United Way of Santa Barbara County, twenty-fifth annual Day of Caring is Saturday, September seventeenth is Saturday. Board, do we have any future agenda items? Ms. Parker?
I'll just say that I've been going to virtually all of the back-to-school nights, doing, tabling for the district information around the facilities bonds, Measures I and Measures J. And I want to give a shout-out to our Wendy Sims Moten and Jackie Reed, who are here in the audience, are soon-to-be appointed board members, who have been coming to many of those as well, and really helping get the district information out. So, thank you.
I have a question. When are district committees going to start meeting?
That's a good question.
I just.
I'll add that to our tactical Friday.
Okay.
I mean, or I don't know if they've already met, but I know that we all belong to different meetings, and at least the two committees I meet, I haven't heard anything from, so I just, I don't know if other committees are meeting, but.
Maybe a Friday, as part of our Friday newsletter as well. Thank you. No other questions, no other future agenda items. If not, we can adjourn this meeting.